Good evening and welcome to the regularly scheduled board meeting for Ventura Unified School District. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Do we have any need to amend the agenda?
Yes, we do. President Rodriguez, we need to amend the item 14D to read that it is now updated to include the title and author from the previous agenda item on December 13th. Title is stamped and the authors are Jason Reynolds and Ibram Kendi.
Great, thank you very much for that and for catching that oversight. Anything else?
No.
Okay, great. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, vote as follows. Trustee Forsythe.
Yes.
Trustee Peterson.
Yes.
Trustee Danenberg.
Yes.
And Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries 4-0.
I do not see any public comment on closed session items, so we will accept a motion to go into closed session to discuss public employee discipline dismissal and release. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I second.
Thank you, vote as follows. Trustee Forsythe.
Yes.
Trustee Peterson.
Yes.
Trustee Danenberg.
Yes.
And Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries 4-0.
Great, thank you.[351.51]
Hi, good evening and thank you for joining us for this regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education for Ventura Unified School District. My name is Sabrina Rodriguez and I'm currently serving as Board Chair. The Board has just returned from closed session and I would ask that you would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and after the Pledge of Allegiance, we're going to take a moment of silence to honor some of our students. So if you would please remain standing.
Ready, begin.
To pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So at this time, we'd like to take a moment of silence to acknowledge the passing of Jesus Arachiga, a junior at Pacific High School who passed away this weekend and also to honor Anthony Motazuma Cardona and Agustin de Paz Perez, who were former Pacific High School students and siblings of existing students in Ventura Unified who also passed away this weekend. I just want to say our hearts are with our Pacific High School staff, many of whom are here today at the loss of these students and with their families. It's always incredibly difficult when we lose young people and the Board also just wanted to take an opportunity to send our love and support to Velma Lomax, who was a trustee with us here for 29 years and whose husband Ron passed away last week. Velma and her husband were married for 51 years and I know that his support and devotion really allowed her to give so much to the district and so we really just wanted to honor him and his life and send her our love. Thank you for that and we will now return, as soon as I find my agenda, to our regular agenda. Ms. Don, would you please take role?
Sure, be happy to. President Sabrina Rodriguez.
Here.
Vice President Dr. Jerry Danenberg.
Here.
Trustee Ms. Amy Callenhan is absent from regular session. Trustee Calvin Peterson.
Here.
Trustee James Forsyth.
Here.
Superintendent Dr. Antonio Castro.
Here.
Student Board Member Lily Shadden is absent this evening. Student Board Member Irene Kim.
Here.
And Student Board Member Alex Castro is also absent this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Don. Item number 10, Report of Action Taken in Closed Session. No action was taken today in closed session and that brings us to our Superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Rodriguez. Thank you also for recognizing the recent loss that we've experienced in our community. As tough as it is to move on from news like that, we also have some things to celebrate and some students to celebrate. I would like to draw our attention tonight to some students who tried out for the 2023 All-State Honor Ensembles. These students were selected to perform in one of the California All-State Bands, Orchestras, and Choirs. We are very proud to announce that 18 students were selected. These students are, so I'm going to list them from schools, from Anticapa Middle School under the direction of Mr. Garnett Joseph Farr, from Cabrillo Middle School under the direction of Mr. Bacalli, Ian Barnes Valentino Canessa, Mia Howard Colby West and Marley West, and from Ventura High School under the direction of Mr. Hunt, Bea Barnes Ethan Dorsey, Amelia Gonzalez, Bryn Gray, Kate Fallon, Assumi Kubota, Caroline Labor, Eva Lechner Hill, Addison Ragsdale, Maddie Rollins, Josh Stewart, and Reese Whitley. So let's offer our appreciation to the students and their band directors. And I will read the gratitude awards after we do our introductions.
Great, thank you. So tonight, we have the opportunity to introduce a few new staff members who are here this evening for their first introduction to our community. So up first is our new Assistant Superintendent for Business Services, Mr. Hassan Mirza. So I'll just read a little bit about you. Mr. Mirza brings a wealth of knowledge in finance and as a Chief Business Officer in the Wilsona School District and the Acton Awadulse Unified School District. Mr. Mirza's extensive experience as a business officer lends to his leading this team. He is known for demonstrating strong, dynamic leadership and is admired by his peers and colleagues. He is a team player who works diligently to create a collaborative environment where everyone feels included and heard. He is passionate about and believes in the work of school business. His former superintendent describes him as highly motivated, positive, and focused. His ability to see the big picture in education goes far beyond his expertise in school administration and financial management. He is currently enrolled in a doctoral program in educational leadership. He graduated from Cal State University Bakersfield with a BA in Business Finance and his MBA. And we are very excited to welcome you to our team. If you have anything you...
Good, yes, good evening, Madam President and Board Members. Happy to be here, I'm excited, I can't wait to start working and serving this district. Tonight, I brought, I dragged along my wife with me, Cynthia Mirza. Yeah, the kids couldn't make it, you know, they have basketball and other things going on, so yes, very excited and eager to start. Thank you, guys.
Go Bakersfield, since I'm from Bakersfield. So I know you're a good guy.
Yes, and welcome to the family.
Thank you.
Congratulations and again, welcome to Ventura Unified. We're looking for good things out of you and appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're very excited to have you here and to start to work together and I know particularly Dr. Castro is eager to hit the ground running, there's lots of work to do, so thank you, we're really excited and would love to have a chance to introduce your wife, if you don't mind, and...
Yeah, sure. Cynthia?
We really want to know the whole family, so...
Hi, nice to meet you guys. I think, I think we're both unexpectedly speaking, so I think he's a little nervous. I'm not used to this either, but it's nice to meet everybody here and thank you for allowing my husband to have the opportunity.
Thank you, thank you.
Sure, I'll just share that we've all had an opportunity to meet Mr. Mirza and spend some time with him during the application process. As President Rodriguez said, we're really looking forward to bringing him onboard because we have a lot of work ahead of us and we feel like he's going to add a tremendous amount of leadership and expertise to our team, so thank you and welcome.
In addition, today, we also get to welcome Mr. Thomas Cransler, who is our new Chief Technology Officer. Welcome. Sorry, and let me get your title correct, Executive Director of Technology Services. Sorry about that. I'll just read a little bit about you, if you don't mind. Mr. Cransler holds a bachelor's degree in computer science and brings with him more than 16 years of educational experience in the technology field. He has served in multiple roles within the Oxnard School District, including Microcomputer Network Technician, Network Systems Analyst, and Director of Network Operations. He is currently serving as Interim Chief Information Officer. Mr. Cransler is a systems thinker that has provided Oxnard School District guidance and direction with the implementation of supports and developed protocols to monitor the progress of technology-related initiatives. He possesses an impressive understanding of technology, project management, data organizational management, and student needs. He is an expert in network infrastructure design and has been responsible for distributing devices to provide one-to-one technology access to nearly 15,000 students. He has created positive change with his collaboration on complex and innovative projects that improve network infrastructure and mobile device management systems and advanced the educational goals of integrating technology into the curriculum. Mr. Cransler is a strong, ethical, and trustworthy leader. He possesses a strong understanding of the global picture of leading an organization to serve the needs of students. He purposely seeks to mentor his staff, capitalizing on their strengths to create leaders. His professionalism, skill set, commitment, focus, and positive attitude make him the ideal candidate for this role. Those are, this is very impressive.
I was going to say.
Big shoes, right?
No, I'm very excited to be here. I actually, I had written a little something, but I think you took my thunder from me. So I did really wanted to say how happy I am to be here and I've worked in education for the last 16, a little bit longer than that, I don't want to say 20 years, but it's a long time. It's so exciting to be able to be working in the community I live in, the community I, I actually, I graduated from about Buena, so I'm definitely Buena student in my entire, my whole career. You know, my friends work here, my kids are graduating from here, you know, I'm a product, my kids are a product. This is just such an exciting, yeah, I'm afraid of this, actually, but no. It's just such an exciting thing to be here and being, and you know, I already feel part of this community, just standing here, I feel at home and so I appreciate that, thank you so much.
Thank you, we're very excited to have you. Do you want to share anything?
Do you have anyone with you?
I didn't, I asked, but they, yeah, they were, they said, "No, thank you."
Now did they know that they would get pulled up?
That's, I think, yeah, I think that was the fear.
Well, welcome to the team, I look forward to the innovation.
Oh, great, thank you.
Yes, likewise, welcome to the team.
Thank you so much.
You're going to have to teach me in technology, I'm not very good at it.
That's what I'm here for, absolutely.
No, we thank you for interest in our district and we really look forward to good things to come in the future, so welcome and good luck.
Okay, thank you.
Similar to, we are very excited to be working with you. Like many districts around us, we all pivoted to one-to-one environment. We're looking forward to your leadership as we look to the years ahead for a true technology integration with the curriculum and everything we do from teaching and learning, so thank you.
That's very kind, thank you so much, it's great to be here, appreciate it.
And up next, but I won't say last and not least because she's amazing, is the introduction of our new Principal of Juana Maria Elementary School, Ms. Sandy Echebeste Corona. So I have your bio, but I actually just feel like I wanted to say that you have been like such a force for positive energy, kindness, and real dedication to our students from your time here in the district and I can read your bio if you want, but I just would love to say that, you know, we were so proud of the work you've done, not only stepping in at Juana Maria over the last few months and doing it with such grace and such kindness, but also just your real focus on students and their well-being over your tenure with us, so we're super excited to have you in this new role and grateful that you stepped forward.
Thank you, Sabrina. I really just wanted to express my gratitude that I do get to continue on. As you know, it is a bittersweet moment and I do just want to give my appreciation to Mike. He has been nothing but warm and welcoming in this time that he's going through, just in the support that he has shown me and just wanting to continue on the wonderful things that he has done at Juana Maria. Our Dolphin community will continue to give that love to him and his family, to the staff and the parents and the students, just everyone there has been beyond amazing and welcoming. You know, to the staff, their grit and their perseverance through these challenges as well have just enabled me to lead the way I have been. We truly have been a team. The gentle love and care that they give to our students is just beyond incredible and inspiring to witness daily. I do want to say thank you to my husband, we're going on 23 years. You know, from the classroom in Kinder, putting up my writing wall and having it have to be perfect, you know, he'd be there with a measuring stick, but you know, even now at Juana Maria, he's been my sound guy for back-to-school night or, you know, setting up the movie night, the projector, so I just really want to say thank you to him. I am beyond fortunate to have him. He just never complains, he always shows up, so thank you, love you mucho. And then to my parents, they could not be here today, they were here at the last time for the Assistant Principal one, but just with the weather and just the coldness that is out there, but I do just want to give my parents just, again, who I am, you know, what they have, how they have modeled, just through life's challenges as well, with the grace, integrity, and faith and, you know, my love of learning and school just really goes down to my mom and she really has just, you know, pushed forth and given me that drive that I am forever grateful for. Honestly, I just really want to end with saying that I love elementary. Those long days are, they just don't feel as long, you know, every day, I'm going to give a little shout out to Ms. Teagan, you know, I get a hug every, I get that Kinder hug in the morning, at, you know, in the morning at dismissal, so it just really offsets those long days. And then on a side note, and not, I don't want to give my age out either, but yeah, I just got to work on those kickball skills and know that I need to stretch a little bit more before I try and run anything out with fifth graders, so that took a couple of days as well, but again, I'm just loving the experience of being there and creating that. I really do look forward to continuing on and just fostering that positive, kind, and just that overall accepting school experience for every student that we have. So again, you know, thank you to all, thank you Gina for the countless support as well, really appreciative of you all, thank you.
Well, I've heard great things, can you hear me? Oh, I've heard great things about you and we love understanding spouses because I know for a fact today that someone is missing a birthday and an anniversary in this room, so we know understanding spouses are very important, so thank you, sir, back there, we appreciate you.
Yes, and congratulations and thank you for staying on. It sounds like the staff is ecstatic to have you there, so if they're ecstatic, if they're happy, we're happy, so thank you so much.
Sandy, you have done an amazing job helping guide Juana Maria through a very difficult time with the tragedy from last summer and you're to be commended for it and your leadership shines and your, how should I put this, Gina? Gina and I have both been Principals at Juana Maria, so we really like what you've done, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for the kind words. Thank you. Thank you for the kind words.
Sorry, I was waiting for you. You know, Sandy, what's, it's already been said, but I just want to share that we lead during some good times and some rough times, and you stepped in an environment where you led with care. And we know going forward, you're going to continue to love the community and to love the students, and that's what we ask. So, thank you for stepping up and continuing to lead.
My pleasure. Thank you.
And just in case anybody wants to know, I'm sorry, I feel like I don't want to shortchange you. You were a teacher at Will Rogers. You've been in our district for more than 15 years. Were assistant principal at Deanza Middle School before stepping into the role at Juana Maria. And again, we're just so grateful to have you and your leadership, and we wish you all the best.
Thank you, Sabrina. Thank you.
All right. Looks like we're ready to go. Thank you, Marie Anne. Every month that we come together, we want to celebrate those who've been recognized for gratitude awards. Marie Anne will play the slide presentation while I read three that have been selected to read. First, I'm going to start with a teacher at Anacapa, Mike Adame. Mr. Adame leads a positive, leaves a positive impression with this person's, this child who recommended him, especially in the area of math. He's helped her tremendously to improve math skills greatly. She wanted to nominate him because he's so motivating to the students, and that he reviews materials until they understand it. He's left positive messages for progress reports and informs of the good progress that her child is making or their child is making. We appreciate the message, and we know that if this child is treated like this, then how could all children be treated? So, we want to appreciate Mike Adame. Thank you. There are two others that we'll bring attention to. Margie Harper, counselor at El Camino. Margie goes above and beyond to support the students, the caring for socio-emotional well-being, to assist with registrations, providing high school, college career counseling, and overseeing exam processes and more. She's always available to staff and students and does so with kindness, patience, and a smile. Thank you, Margie. And then finally, Principal of Limon Grove, Dr. Susan Martinez. Dr. Martinez is noted as a principal who often goes and does without recognition, but she is an administrator who at any given time has not led, is not tasked with leading just one part of a campus, but multiple parts of a campus, multiple umbrellas under Limon Grove School. From general education to SDC to Homestead and now at K8, Dr. Martinez continues to lead her school with an amazing attitude, and she does not seem to understand what it means to be, what is impossible. So, thank you all, and thank you all to our recipients. We appreciate all of you.
And that brings us to Irene. Thanks for being here, especially in light of the weather and all of your colleagues dropping out.
Hello. First, I would like to highlight our El Camino High School 2022 to 2023 early graduates. It's really, I'm just really proud of them for like getting all of their credits in really early to be able to graduate earlier than four years. And it's, I'll just like to highlight their names. It's Francesca, Bryce, Wylan, Osia, and Kendall. And I just wanted to congratulate their impressive efforts. Going on, last year, El Camino started something called Student of the Month, in which all of our teachers nominate one student that they feel like has been showing outstanding efforts in their academics or just like influencing their peers. This month, we wanted to honor Ashagri, Victoria, Timothy, Magzy, Trevor, Sierra, and Brooke. Yeah, we not wanted to just highlight their academic achievements, but also wanted to highlight their leadership skills as well. So, if you read those, it's just not limited to one category, but teachers can pick whatever they want to highlight their student for. Moving on, El Camino is really focused on building culture and climate. In late November, leadership class decided to organize a fundraiser for Cheers for Children, and we decided to have like a pizza party, but a pizza party that gathers donations from students so that they could have a lunch with their peers and just have games and just play fun games and bond while their donations also go to the Cheers for Children fundraiser. So, we're really proud of coming together and raising almost $400. El Camino is also having several enrollment information nights coming up. We have two in January and one in February, and all of the information nights will be held at El Camino in person. So, we are really excited to welcome the new class of 2023 to 24. And just a few upcoming events, as you know, El Camino students take a lot of classes at VC. So, this week, we were supposed to go, but because of the rain, we didn't really have in-person classes. But I'm really excited to go back and start our new VC semester. We have our two information nights that I just listed, and at the end of this month, we have a quad day. So, El Camino students can have fun coming back to school after winter break. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thanks for sharing what's going on at El Camino. Appreciate you being here. At this time, correspondence, I don't have any correspondence to share. Do any board members have correspondence? Okay, that leads us to public comments. And I've taken the liberty of organizing these by topic, so I apologize if I've taken them out of order and if that matters, but I feel like it's kind of nice to clump things. So, up first is our Pacific High School staff. I have Mr. DeClerc, followed by Mr. Ippe, followed by Doug Kidwell, followed by Ms. DePaulo. And I know you've all spoken or attended our meetings before. Just so you know, the board is not able to comment on public comments, but we do take notes, and we do really appreciate you being here.
Good evening. My name is Sebastian DeClerc, and I'm one of most of Pacific High School's teachers here tonight to talk about our concerns regarding the district's plan to expand our continuation program at Pacific High School. We thank you for the opportunity to speak. We would have preferred to have had a dialogue, and we hope to follow up this presentation with an invitation to board members to come and meet at our site so we can have questions and answers. And I do thank all the board members who got back to us via email, and I apologize I haven't gotten back to all of you with those yet. The current plan as proposed by the district would increase the population of Pacific High School by 20%. And we all share the common concern that our success depends on our small size. We can't work, and we can't do this work if we get any bigger. Pacific High School is all about relationships. It's on our t-shirts, right? And we don't mean relationships about individual students and individual teachers like we've got in all of our comprehensive high schools. No, relationships at Pacific means school-wide, community relationships, a campus where every student knows every adult, and every adult knows every student. Our students arrived at Pacific High School because they lacked relationships with teachers, admin, and staff at their larger comprehensive high schools, and they succeed with us because we are a small school. I'm a relative newcomer to Pacific High School, but the veteran teachers at our site will speak to the negative impact that the growth of the past couple of years has already had on their effectiveness to serve all their students. In 2019, Pacific High School had 150 students, and we now have 225. That's a 50% increase in three years, and we feel that we're at a breaking point. We agree with Dr. Castor that our mission is to serve our most vulnerable students, and that's why we're here tonight. We're not willing to gamble the success of our current students in an attempt to accommodate 40 more. We believe that there's an unintended but very real risk of institutional racism in the proposed expansion. The graphs I handed out to you show the disproportionate representation of socioeconomic, Hispanic, and multilingual learners in our campus, and it's very difficult to accept a proposal that expects the district's neediest students to do more and give up more than its more privileged campuses. And that's what the expansion asks. PHS is better positioned than any other campus to understand the severity of the credit deficiency crisis. We're also best positioned to say what could or could not work, and we believe that expanding Pacific High School would further aggravate the achievement and opportunity gaps between our historically underserved populations and the students who historically do well in our schools because they're well-served. We have solutions. That's all we talk about. And I want to speak very briefly to the prescriptive testing solution using ingenuity. Students at Pacific High School have earned 1,250 credits so far this year alone by demonstrating that they have retained sufficient information to earn credits in classes they previously failed. Credit by examination reduces the capriciousness of individual teacher grading and allows students to demonstrate the minimal level of mastery to earn necessary credits towards graduation.
Time is up.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. DeClerc, before you step away, I just, in my notes, what was the enrollment in 2019?
150.
Okay. And just, because I want to make sure I get it correct, current is?
225.
225.
Sorry, 230. I apologize. 230.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Pete Ippe, and I am an artist and also an instructor in career technical education at Pacific High School. The slide I've presented before you on the document here talks about four things: trauma, reset, relief, and success. The reason I bring up trauma is that the majority of our students are there because of childhood trauma. As Mr. DeClerc had stated, those that suffered the most are the most marginalized students from the pandemic, had the largest learning losses. Pacific High School has had our largest graduation year in 2022. We had 91 students graduate. 61 of them graduated under AB 104, which is a reduction in credits. Another nine were reduced by AB 216, benefiting homeless and foster youth. Bankruptcy relief is something that happens in finance when you are in a debt that you cannot overcome. Our students in Ventura Unified are in academic bankruptcy. There needs to be relief provided by the district in the form of a credit reduction. I believe that the 40 students that would be coming to Pacific High School are merely 5% to 10% of the number of students that are academically deficient. And yes, you did that math right. That's 400 to 800 students here. That's my estimation. Academic relief benefits our students because it gives them the opportunity that graduation is a reality. It brings them to school because we have a small community. Currently, we're funded at 20 to 1, but many of our classes are already over 22. That's an average. The California Department of Education for Continuation Schools recommends a ratio not higher than 15 to 1. So, we are already greater than that recommendation according to CDE. I just want to reiterate that 30 to 40 students will be a pyrrhic victory for the district, one that comes at great cost.
30 seconds.
Making the whole ordeal to win, not worth it. I feel that we have the greatest impact with our students when every adult knows every child and knows why they're there and how to help them. Thank you for your time.
Hello and good evening. I'm Doug Kidwell. I've been at Pacific for 27 years now and enjoyed every year of it. I wanted to speak to some of the problems and some of the fears that we're feeling currently, which could be expanded by expanding Pacific High School. The senior classes right now at Pacific High School are highly impacted. It is tough to get every senior right now into the senior classes that they need. To add two more classrooms with 40 more students could greatly add more stress to the master schedule and make it even harder for our current students plus the new students to get the senior classes they need. This would jeopardize student success. It wouldn't help. It would, could possibly hurt. As Sebastian said, teachers, we used to know every student on campus by their name. We knew their story. We knew, and if there was a problem that arose, the teachers were able to really make an impact by having that relationship. We hate to think that that could be jeopardized by adding more students to Pacific High School. The counselors are currently, right now, do so much. They are in charge of the scheduling. When there's a problem, peer mediation. Emotional crisis happens, there, that's another one. We use, go through credits regularly with students. And right now, sometimes the counselors are not able to meet with the students that we'd like them to meet with because of their already busy, full agenda. They use the word compassionate fatigue is what they're experiencing and feel like it could be even more so if Pacific were to expand. The bottom line is, we have a concern, as you can see, that making Pacific High School larger, we would hate to lose the effectiveness that we have right now with students. And that's not what anybody, I'm sure, at the district would want to see, and certainly, that's not what anybody on our campus wants to see. So, thank you. And Charlotte DePaulo has some thoughts and ideas on alternate programs.
Good evening. I'm Charlotte DePaulo. I am relatively new to Pacific. I had spent several years at Ventura High School. This is my 21st year in the district. I really loved Pacific High School, and I was really excited to join the program. Prior to coming to Pacific, I ran what's called the Academy Program at Ventura High School. We designed this program to address what we saw was the incoming, this is pre-pandemic, but incoming freshman students. About half the class was not testing at grade-level math, and math is traditionally the gatekeeper as an indication of success towards graduation. So, we knew that there was a problem. We knew that there was a problem five years ago, and we're seeing the effects of it now. So, we created this problem, or this program to address this situation at Ventura High School. We had small class sizes. We targeted 20 to 25 students with their families. We had monthly family nights where we would play games. We would share meals. We really developed the relationship between the teachers and the students and their parents. There are, there are still students that I'm in contact with now. They're seniors now. I had a slide that would show you all the fancy ways that we designed this program. I'm really proud of the program. There are other approaches that we could use. Immediately, I know that we have students who are credit deficient and need that help. Prescriptive testing is the way to go. I feel like we're in an uncomfortable position right now, the Pacific faculty, of trying to keep kids out, which is not our mentality. We are a welcoming group who only want to help students, but this is not the best, most effective way to use us, and it's not the best, most effective way to get kids caught up. There's just too many. We have too, we have too many students who are too credit deficient. So, there are, there are other ways to do this. Prescriptive testing, I would definitely say. Opening a second campus. You have experts at Pacific who really want to help, but we do not want to help by compromising the program that we have now. And we believe that increasing by two classrooms will do that. Thank you.
Ms. DePaulo, Charlotte, Charlotte, sorry, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Sabrina.
I just wanted to ask, is the Academy Program still running at Ventura High School?
No, as it turns out, it was me.
Okay.
And I'm gone. But, but it definitely was an effective program, and I'd be thrilled to have somebody else kind of take over.
Thank you.
Talk about those programs that others comprehend.
And then you mentioned a slide, and I wasn't sure, is that in this or is that?
It's the teeny-tiny alternative solutions.
Okay, perfect. So, we do have it.
I don't have my readers, so I couldn't really read it.
Me neither, but I'm, but it's there. Okay. Thank you very much, and thank you all for being here. Up next, I have Jean Badstuber, followed by Deborah Meyer Morris. Up next, I have Jean Badsteubner, followed by Deborah Meyer Morris.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First of all, I had an opportunity to be at Buena High School for 40 years, and during that time, I got to work with some really outstanding people. And one of them I want to thank publicly is Velma Lomax. She's a dear, wonderful person. She belongs in the County Hall of Fame for Education. Also, Mr. Kranzler is a Buena grad. He's got to be good. I was employed for the district for 41 years, one year at Anacapa and 40 years at Buena. I was a teacher in the classroom for 15 years and 25 years as a counselor, and I really enjoyed that time. I remember when my contract, I looked at the money, it was only four digits to the left of the decimal point, and gas was 25 to 30 cents a gallon. And I've lived with the district and seen the contract negotiations that we've gone through over a number of years, and this is where my comments were. One of the things that concerns me, it seems to me that the district and the school teachers should come together with proposals and just let it work. And one of the things that bothered me over my career in the district is that it seemed to me that the district and the teachers were at odds. The teachers seemed to come to me, or come to the meetings well-prepared, they had what seemed like a reasonable request. The district never had money. Never had money. This year, the district didn't have money, but you offered 1%. That is unbelievable. You should be ashamed. You would have been better off offering zero. The teachers that I've talked with, retired and current, have become cynical, and they've looked at the school board as an adversary rather than an asset, something to bring them along and to prepare themselves and prepare kids better. I'm going to switch, if I may. I coached and taught, and one of the things that recently some of you probably saw, the NC2A Women's 200 Freestyle Swimming Event was won by a transgender male, who was a huge sucker, and he got all kinds of accommodations by some of the local politicians in Pennsylvania. I think we have the problem, eventually, we're going to face that in Ventura. And what's going to happen, are you going to, what kind of accommodations are we going to make for transgender students? I think we should have men's competition, women's competition, boys, girls, and then have a separate competition for transgenders, who will then compete on an equitable basis. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, and thank you for your years of service. Deborah? Deborah, you'll be followed by Ben Cohen.
Can I get five minutes because I'm talking about three items?
Yes, you do. Sorry, and I should have caught that.
I'm not going to use this, I'll use this because I don't have a right to.
Oh, darn, I'm a visual alerter.
Well, when it gets to three minutes, I'll turn it off for you.
Okay.
Go ahead.
All right, thank you. First, I want to congratulate my Ventura County Leadership Academy Cohort 25 member, James Forsyte. We had the pleasure of going through that program together, and I commend you for winning your election, and I welcome your role here. I'm Deborah Meyer Morris. As you know, I ran for school board against Terrium, a parent of kids that used to go here, that both had learning disabilities. So I'm here today to talk about a few things. First, I want to talk about civic equity for students with disabilities. And ironically, it so dovetails with what all these fine people from Pacific just talked about. So there's a huge disparity. This is based on an educational journal publication, The Teacher's Record, from a new study from 2022 by Dr. Leah Bueso, B-U-E-S-O, from UC Riverside. So she have discovered through her research that according to the data from the National Center of Education Statistics, only 26% of students in high school have high-impact education for civics, but only 6% of students with disabilities do. Who are the students that benefit from the high-impact education? White students, economically advantaged students, and students in higher-track classes. Those are not the students at Pacific, and they're not the students with disabilities in this district. History has taught us that if you're marginalized, you're not adequately protected by the people that are in power. You're excluded from civil and political participation. That is absolutely true with people with disabilities in our county. Historical patterns of segregation and exclusion have already resulted in lower educational limits, limited voter registration and turnout, and higher unemployment rates. Increased social isolation from the pandemic has only exacerbated these things. And so I'm asking you that as you proceed through the pandemic and recovery, that you incorporate actual high-impact learning opportunities and participation for students with disabilities, like they should be down here advocating for their school. Okay? It shouldn't be their teachers. Like, they should have been empowered to come and advocate for themselves. And the same with students on IEPs. In IEPs, when your student graduates and they have their transition plan, they need advocacy skills. They cannot go into the world of college or work and not know how to get reasonable accommodations. Why is it that students who are without disabilities, when they ask for help, they are viewed as having positive attributes of independence? Right? Self-determination. But when a student with disability asks for help, they're viewed as inferior and needing more support. But their intelligence level is just as high, maybe in other ways that are not apparent. So how do we, why do we construct the need for support differently between students without disabilities and students with disabilities? What message are we sending to these students? Why should needing support, closed captioning, note-taking, or assistive technology make you lesser? Why should it require that you have a substandard education and lower potential in your life? So that is not sending a message of inclusion and development of people. As we move forward, I really hope that you will respect what they're saying. Like, there is so much to be done to catch these students up. As you know from my attendance at the LCAP meeting, I'm destroying this, and I've been advocating for high-impact tutoring for the students at the bottom, not the low-hanging fruit at the top. The students at the bottom are the students that are going to Pacific in five years, not the ones near the top. Also, I wanted to talk about the surplus property report real quick. I want you to imagine inclusive housing, including inclusive housing for disabled people in whatever proposals you're working out with the city. So when you're working on your who's going to live there, not just make it about money, make it about serving the disabled people that have a high propensity for homelessness with mental health problems and other things in this county. And lastly, regarding the $35,000 check, Andrea Marcus.
30 seconds.
For her stellar advocacy in obtaining $27,000 in compensatory ed for one child in this district, I ask you, out of a point of equity, what are you doing to the families to serve their students that don't have money to hire Andrea Marcus, or find me, or somebody else who could write a letter and get their kids compensatory ed? Those kids are going to Pacific, too. Those are the trauma victims, those are the ones with mental health that COVID left behind. So thank you very much. Sorry, had a lot to say tonight.
Mr. Cohen, you're up next, and you'll be followed by Stephen Schaefer.
I respectfully request five minutes since I'm talking on two different subjects.
I noticed that you have a policy listed as your second item, but that's not on the agenda. So it's if you have two agenda items that you're speaking on.
Can I submit this? All right.
If you've written the public comments?
Let me just hold on for notes, and then I'll give it to you when I get done talking.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. So, in regards to Agenda Item 14D, hopefully the correct book was reviewed, since there are three books in the stamped collection. The entire title is stamped, Racism, Anti-Racism, and You, is a book of so much importance that its adaptation should not be left to reading some excerpts in one African-American parent council meeting. How many parents in the community were in attendance that night? As a re-elected member of the APC that missed that one meeting, I emphatically state, this book does not represent my views, culture, or beliefs, and is divisive, racist, and should not be used for educational material. Consider before voting the quote of author Ibram X. Kendi, "Colorblindness is racism." Or, "In order to rectify past discrimination, you need current and future discrimination." That's who you want your public voting record to support? Getting back to the book, Chapter 1, titled "The Story of the World's First Racist," is how slavery and racism started in the year 1415, specifically in Europe, by Prince Henry of Portugal. Let me remind everyone of a little-known book called The Bible, which is full of stories about slavery and racism. Heck, the Old Testament even has a Bill of Rights for slaves. Ironic, considering the slaves became the slave masters. Racism and slavery is not a European construct, or a white construct. It is a human construct that has been happening since the beginning of time. There was zero recognition in the book that it was Europe and America being the first to abolish slavery, while it was still going on around the world, especially currently still going on right now in Africa. What is the value of having VUSD board members vote for their approval of a book like this? Is this what you want your public voting record to support? Do any of you want to start the slippery slope of judging the social norms of the past by the standards of today? If you're serious about giving parents the opportunity to review a book, put the entire title of the book in the VUSD newsletter with a link for a free online PDF copy to include Audible and have a six-month review period with a follow-up survey prior to voting. That would give the opportunity to review the book and have respectful discourse from parents and students. Here's my next thing. My daughter was called a nigger repeatedly at school. Okay? These girls that went on, and this is what I want to use the rest of my time with, the girls that went on and bullied my daughter, this is what the school district said about it.
30 seconds.
This was their final thing. This kind of language is not acceptable on our campus, and it's horrible that your daughter had to experience it. After we spoke, I investigated the situation, and I moved forward with the appropriate disciplinary action with an educational component and follow-up site administration. Abar is turning every single thing into a racial incident. And Abar went on to say that all of you have no policy against bullying. Meanwhile, I found this policy in HR that actually stated how to address racial and bullying concerns that went all the way up to state level.
Time is up.
I talked to three people up in, I talked to three people up in HR department, and no one knew about this hidden policy that's on your website. Please make this policy available to all parents, so all parents know how to rectify something like that, so it doesn't have to get turned into a racial issue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. And can I just ask a point of clarification? What school site are we talking about?
Are you?
For your daughter's experience.
Since I have your email, can I email?
Yes.
Because the thing is, other people are saying.
I just want to make sure it gets followed up on.
And the thing about it is, there's an ongoing thing because these same girls, they posted a video on Tik.
Mr. Cohen, we're not engaging in discussion of that, I just wanted to make sure that we can follow up with you, so.
Right, but I just want to make sure, this is not a reflection of staff, other students, this is a reflection of one person who was stupid.
Thank you.
And they did that to my daughter. It's not a reflection of everyone else. Thank you.
Mr. Schaefer, you will be followed by Ann Watley, and then by Dan Nelson.
This was specifically about surplus property. Are you going to discuss that and have a staff report?
We are going to discuss that, if you want. I can hold your comment until we have that.
That would be great.
Perfect.
I'm not sure what you're going to say.
We have some others. It's Item 15B. Ms. Watley, I have you for Item 16B, but I don't know if you want to speak now, or wait until that item is called.
I'm fine to talk now.
Okay.
Hi. I'm here as a parent because I saw that on the agenda, the facilities was going to provide an update on the master plan and recommended projects, bond projects for the next year. And I'm really grateful for the work that everyone here put into developing the bond measure and working to get it passed. It's so important for the future of our kids and our community. I want to share my experience and advocate for a transparent process for both communicating plans and genuinely engaging all stakeholders when making decisions at the site level. Whether it's enclosing a campus with a fence for increased security or upgrading teaching and learning spaces, these are all changes that have a real impact on the climate and culture of a campus. And there's so much potential for creating amazing spaces that encourage learning and exploration. And it will be important to hear from all schools' community members, including the various perspectives and ideas, so that you can understand the needs and take into account the considerations. So I want to share, and I'm hopeful that we can make sure that we all take the lessons from the initial work done on the fencing at Loma Vista Elementary into account when we're talking about this process. So I'm an involved parent. I've served on the site school council at two different schools. I am involved in the PTA, but I was really frustrated and disheartened by the process that took place there. I asked on numerous occasions to get information on what was going to happen when I heard that there was going to be a fence, and I was never able to get confirmed plans until the fence was already up. And so I know I'm not here to place blame or make anyone a fall person. I know there were really exceptional circumstances this fall, and I think the lack of a process was part of the problem. And so what I'm really asking for is, and I know that it's in the presentation later, so I just wanted to, like, put an exclamation point after it, that there is a defined process around design standards that really align with our values as a district.
30 seconds.
And an approach that's open to input from all parties. And that would mean clear communications about the plans in advance, and really distributing and sharing those plans to the community and to parents, because that's not something that happened at all, as well as a clear process providing feedback for all stakeholders and some transparency in the process. Thanks so much.
Hi. Okay, here we go. I've got five items to talk to, so I'm going to talk really fast. First off, thanks to my colleagues at Pacific High School for showing up tonight and talking about how important their program is and how we can best support their program. These are the folks who know what they're talking about because they're doing it every day. And while it's great to sit in a district office and think you know, being there on the ground in the room actually lets you know. And so I would like to make this point, we need less Excel and more collaboration, less spreadsheets and more conversations, because that's how we're going to move forward and get the best for our students, and they deserve our best. Next, I'd like to welcome our three new folks that we talked about today, and specifically to our new technology officer. For the love of God, please don't change the gradebook. I'm not prepared for that. I just couldn't do it. I love technology, but that's a bridge too far. Also, I'd like to congratulate, Ventura Unified Education Association has our negoti, or I'm sorry, our voting coming up at the end of the month. We have three people who are running unopposed. They are not a shoe-in because we have a write-in process. However, it seems pretty clear that Sarah McLachlan will be taking over as VUE president, Sebastian DeClerc will continue on as VUE vice president, and Linda Bergfeld will return as our VUE treasurer. So thank you to those who have given up a huge chunk of their life to do something really fun, which is union office, yeah. You're going to love it. It is nothing but a party, and it never stops, whether you want it to or not. I'd like to talk briefly about what we're talking about, facilities. Yes, I'm thrilled that the bond issue passed, although VUE did not officially support it. We didn't vote against it, we just were neutral. I'm really glad that it's happening, and I can't wait for there to be as much employee input as humanly possible for the dollars that are spent. I remember 25 years ago, we wound up with smart walls, whether we wanted one or not. We didn't want one, but we got them anyway. So the more input from the sites, the better, because if we spend this money improperly, there's no reason for the public to give us any more dollars, and we desperately need to continue to fund our facilities. And finally, I'd like to talk about, in the last 54 seconds, the concept of the pass-through. I've sent you an email on this in the past, and we are talking about this through negotiations. This is not bargaining away from the table, it's just a conceptual conversation. A pass-through means whatever the cost of living funded amount is from the state, let's call it 8.32, which was the last projected COLA, we would negotiate a call it 8.32, which was the last projected COLA, we would negotiate a percentage of that, call it 80%-
Thirty seconds.
-and that amount would be budgeted for an increase for employee, not Vespa, not VUEA, but all of us. So it would prevent us from doing another 1% offer when the district got over 12%, over 13%. And it would mean that we could be budgeting, and it wouldn't, we could show everyone that we were budgeting for salary increases, and it wasn't a last-minute, oops, we forgot, we're going to throw this in at the last-minute kind of thing. So I'll talk to you more about pass-through at a later time when I have more time. Thanks very much.
And so I have Stephen Schaefer, Marco Cuevas. Marco, I have you on here for two different items, and you want to speak at the time of the items? Is that accurate? Okay, just want to make sure. Anthony Ventura, Pedro Toscano, Scott Zimmerman, Alex Perez, and Jonathan Duran. And I just want to confirm with all of you that you do wish to speak at the time of the item, or would you like to speak now? Okay, just giving you the option. Okay, great, thank you very much. That brings us to our action items. Item 14A, consideration of resolution of the Board of Education to the Board of Supervisors regarding the general obligation bond. So I have one, two, three, four, five public comments. You guys ready?
I didn't realize that was the first one we were doing.
I know, I was off on my numbering, too. So Anthony, I have you first, followed by Pedro, followed by Scott.
Good evening, board members. My name is Anthony Ventura. I'm a resident here of the city of Ventura. I'm also a father of four children, including my wife. They're all products of public education. I do believe that public education is a very important part of our country. It creates diversity. My wife is a nurse, my two sons are carpenters. I'm a carpenter as well. I'm a representative with Carpenter's Local 805. And I just wanted to commend the board here for going out and putting this bond in front of the residents of Ventura and letting them decide if they wanted to pass it or not. I know personally myself, I spent a lot of weekends and evenings trying to get the bond passed. I believe that if you look at the bond that was passed in Oxnard with the Oxnard Unified High School District, that bond right there has currently, right now, on Dalsoe High School at like a 70% local hire, and that's veterans, women, minorities, local kids that actually graduated from some of those high schools. I think that you guys should use that as a model for hiring local, you know, a community workforce here locally. I know that with the jobs that it creates, I know this personally, because, you know, like I said, I have two sons that both went to community college, and they dropped out and they ended up joining the trades. We have a really, really need for an increase for trades, whether it's electrician, carpenter, ironworker, laborer, sheet metal. But I just wanted to tell you guys that for myself, as a resident here and as a taxpayer and as a voter, I appreciate what you guys did. Thank you for your time.
Anthony, sorry, Anthony? Sorry, if you would just return. I just want to add that you very much downplayed how much you personally invested in walking and knocking on doors and advocating for the bond. So I just want to make sure to say thank you for you, for your members. Your support was absolutely crucial, and we really appreciate it.
Well, I appreciate that, but I also want to, you know, these gentlemen back here and the members that went out. I mean, we did do a lot of, even Sundays, we walked in. Typically, we don't do that on Sundays. We like to spend time with our family. But we knew the importance of the bond itself, and we knew, you know, it's our future. You know, I have two grandsons, and they're going to be going to public education, so I know how important it is. So, thank you.
So I have Pedro Toscano? I'm sorry, am I saying that? Yeah, okay. And then followed by Scott Zimmerman.
Hi, good evening. How are you? My name is Pedro Toscano. First of all, I want to congratulate this district on obtaining that bond. Long overdue, from what I hear and what I read, it's over 20 years in the making, you know? It clearly is going to serve its purpose, refurbishing and modernizing the district. Classrooms that are gonna, you know, inspire these kids to learn that the learning is continuously growing, so for their own growth, it is going to produce a lot of great minds here. Now, with those great minds, you know, I would like to also extend an invitation to all of you here present to come and visit our facility, our training facility. We also teach. We also teach our craft to a lot of the kids from the surrounding communities. And every single one of you is welcome to come down, walk the facility, see what we have to offer, you know, because I believe we all were in this as partnership. So we would like to see that partnership flourish from beginning to end, so that, like Anthony said, so you guys could take, you guys could be the next example to the next school district that gets another bond, and would like to see the growth in their community. I don't want to scare everybody, I'm pretty sure everybody knows, but Ventura is planning a big, big, big plan to bring a lot of people here. There's a lot of housing coming in, and with that, you know, we need to make and prepare the school district to modern state-of-art facilities. So just want to let you guys know that the carpenters are here, and we're ready to build. Thank you.
Scott, you'll be followed by Alex Perez.
And there we go. All right, good evening, everyone. Yeah, congratulations to everyone here on the board, my colleagues in the background, everyone attending, anyone watching. This is huge for Ventura. And like I said, our sergeant said, long overdue, and, you know, providing adequate facilities, state-of-the-art facilities for young kids growing up, you know, coming up in school. It just, it helps bring a positive environment all the way around. Being a father of five and girls that play travel softball, everything, I know what it goes in, even on that end, of having the right equipment, having the right tools. And what that does to the mindset when they're out there on the field, you can see it. You can see it in the schools and the classrooms when they have all the proper materials, new materials, marker boards, all those things, even the presentation of it really helps just encourage them to want to learn, want to build a better and a brighter future for themselves. And all of you are in support of that. We're in support of that, want to see working in collaboration and showing them there's another pathway as well, you know, not necessarily a four-year institution. Those are great, and that's, and we still need all that. We need those people, kids to go to and get those four-year degrees and beyond. MBAs here and here, doctorates, we need that. We also need to identify early on students who would do well, work with their hands like we've done. And it's not just a job, it's a career. It's something that we provide, and we got guys out there building the highways, building the schools, and we need to train up the next class to replace those guys as we start moving our way out. It's a life cycle, it's a generational plan, and we're all on the right track. Thank you.
Mr. Perez, you'll be followed by Jonathan Duran.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Alex Perez, and congratulations to all the new folks. So I was also a product of public school. I actually went to Santa Paula High School. They had just done the remodel at the bottom section by the football fields, or, I'm sorry, the softball fields. And I remember walking into the high school that was newly remodeled, and it was very inspiring, it was exciting, you know, a new building, it's good for the kids. So this bond should really inspire a lot of these kids going to these schools, and hopefully a lot of the new buildings, the projects that are coming along. Congratulations on the bond. These guys did walk a lot and spend a lot of their Sundays without their families, and I'm sure you guys also, and a lot of people. So I just wanted to say congratulations, and we're excited to get started and work with you guys in the process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Jonathan Duran, I'm actually a third-generation union carpenter. So I was born and raised within the, around the organization. So my grandfather was a residential woodframer, and my father were a residential woodframer, and then transitioned to vertical concrete. But again, like us, it's just, you have an opportunity. It was. When I went to school, it wasn't that way. It was like, go to school, get a better job, go that route. Good thing I had a Plan B, fell back, had an opportunity to come back into the trades, understand it was good living, work with your hands, provide for your family, have good benefits, and retire with dignity. That's our main focus. For myself, I am a representative with the Southwest Regional Mountain State Carpenters now. We have a program, I know you guys are all familiar with Career Connections. Those are the programs that we're looking at right now, having a pathway for these students from high school into our trade. It's a pre-apprenticeship program. Right now, so far, we have Simi Valley Unified School District, Oxnard Unified School District. LA has 12 schools within their school district, and it's expanding through Southern California and other states. But what we're looking for is a partnership. We're looking for something for these students to have an opportunity to, hey, guess what? I was an A-plus student. Guess what? I was part of special ed. I had learning disabilities. But it doesn't mean anything. As long as I can be able to function as an adult and be able to have an opportunity to grow, that's what it's about. And with having these opportunities for these students, you're giving them to learn, earn what you learn, as we say. Hey, you're out there in the industry, it's our four-year program, and we're out there constantly, hey, opportunities, growth. And like any of our students that do come into our program, we teach them, hey, it's just one step. You're an apprentice now, you're going to become a journeyman in four years. If you want to become a superintendent, a foreman, a project manager, we'll give you the pathway to be able to do that. Those are things that we help our members with. But we're so happy that Ventura Unified School District got this bond passed, and we're happy that we can be able to be a part of this program. And if you guys, like my other colleague said, Pedro Toscano said, hey, anytime you guys want to come down to our facility, more than welcome. If you want to come to some of our other state-of-the-art facilities down south, then more than welcome. But we're offering that to you guys. And again, if you have any other questions-
Thirty seconds.
-feel free to reach out to us. Thank you.
Thank you, and again, thank you for your help. Marco.
That was after the next subsection, 14B, but-
I'm sorry. Do you have a question?
I could just speak now, I mean, it's the next one. Good evening, honorable members of the board. As you consider forming the Measure E Oversight Committee, it is my hope that these concerns be taken into account. My name is Marco Cuevas, and while I speak as a member of the public and a resident of the West Side, I see parallel serving as a member of Ventura's Measure O Citizens Oversight Committee. As I'm reading through the proposed bylaws that were attached in today's agenda, my main concern is in regards to the duties, found in Section 3.4. Limiting jurisdiction in key areas such as subsection C expenditure of bond funds and subsection E approval of project prioritization may lead some to ask, what is the point of this committee? I urge you to consider making this something more meaningful than just the formality of rubber stamping something put in front of the committee. While I have opinions on the scope of the committee that I serve on Measure O, even there, we're able to approve the recommendation of itemized proposals. Given the limited scope, what repercussions would there be if the committee were to say something does not align with the goals of Measure E? I also wanted to note Section 6.1, limiting meetings to no more than quarterly seems a bit restrictive. What if special meetings are required if something can't be finished in a regular meeting once a quarter, for example? Additionally, what about the need to have subcommittees? Those are just some of the thoughts that come to mind as I reviewed the proposed bylaws. At the end of the day, we all want to see these funds used in the best interest for the community, and I would urge the board to consider the qualifications of members and value the insights that they would bring to the table. Thank you for your consideration and time on this matter.
Thank you, Marcos. Really appreciate your comments. Okay, so that brings us to the discussion of Item 14A. Dr. Castro.
Thank you, President Rodriguez. The board and the community has had the opportunity to review the Resolution 2301. Most notably, if I can draw your attention to Section 4, which is delivery of this resolution. Should the board take action to approve the resolution this evening? The next step would be that you would be effectively directing myself, the secretary of the board, to deliver a copy of the resolution to the county superintendent of schools with the request that the county superintendent deliver a copy of this resolution and certificate of election results attached as Exhibit A to the clerk of the board of the county. So that's effectively what you have the opportunity and staff is asking for this evening.
Board members, do you have any questions? Do I have a motion? Or do you wish to discuss?
I do have a question.
Okay.
What is the purpose of this resolution as far as, is it a legal requirement that we do this, or is it, what happens with it once the county clerk, the county board clerk gets it?
So, yes, it's required, and in terms of what happens next after that, I would ask Dr. Barstad, is he here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We had an attorney who was going to be present to answer a lot of these specific questions, who was unable to be here this evening because of distance. Dr. Barstad, can you fill in for, to the degree that we can, minus the attorney?
Dr. Dennenberg, this notifies the Board of Supervisors that we intend to market and sell bonds, and as you know from your experience, that involves the county treasurer and some of their departments. And so it basically puts them on notice that we're going to be asking them for their cooperation and for their legal oversight in that process.
Thank you.
So with that, board, we have the opportunity, this is a first read, we can bring it back next month for a second read, but since this is largely procedural, I would encourage us to take care of it today.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Votus follows, trustee Forsythe.
Yes.
Trustee Peterson.
Yes.
Trustee Dennenberg.
Yes.
And trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 4-0.
Great, thank you. And again, thank you to the members of the public who supported this initiative and who have allowed us to make this truly historic investment in our schools. It's a big deal, and we are incredibly grateful. Item 14B, the only public comment I had on that was Mr. Cuevas. So this is consideration of the resolution forming the Oversight Committee and adopting bylaws.
Thank you, President Rodriguez. Similarly, the board has the opportunity tonight to adopt a resolution and thereby adopting the bylaws. If you, if I direct your attention to Section 3, most notably, the resolution allows us at that point to be able to commence the committee process. We would have 60 days from the date of the board accepting this resolution to be able to set that committee in process. The bylaws detail the committee, the components of the committee, the selection of the committee. I'll just note that in terms of the membership for the public, I think it's important to note that there are requirements that the committee have at least seven members. One member needs to be a parent or guardian of a child enrolled in the district. One member needs to be a parent or guardian of a child enrolled in the district and an active parent, active is a parent-teacher organization such as PTA or school site council. One member shall be active in a business organization representing the business community located in the district. One member shall be active in a senior citizens organization. One member shall be active in a bona fide taxpayer association, and therefore that leaves two members to be community members at large.
Do you have any questions?
If we were to modify the charge of this committee, are we virtually giving up our right to determine if the committee wanted to override us?
Okay, let me, Dr. Barstad, if you can come back up and stay up for this item. The- The recommendation of staff is to adopt the bylaws as currently proposed because it meets the requirements for the statutory obligations of the committee, which is effectively to approve and serve as an oversight body for the expenditures. Dr. Barstad, can you talk in detail about some of the recommendations based on your experience?
Sure. You know, first of all, the Prop 39 established the Oversight Committees to ensure that bond funds were spent exclusively on bond projects authorized by the board. And then, secondly, that bond funds didn't go to subsidize district funds, particularly in the employment of teachers and administrators. And that was pretty much it. As far as its statutory purpose, it's an auditing committee. It is there to make sure that it receives financial reports from the district, reviews those reports, asks questions. Those questions have to do with what did we spend it on? How does that match the original proposition? And then, finally, the district is required by law to do an independent audit once a year to look at the same things. And then this Oversight Committee reviews that audit and annually makes a report to the board. With respect to Dr. Danenberg's question of could they do more? You might notice in Section 10, Amendment of Bylaws. These bylaws are at your discretion. These are provided to us by legal counsel that works on these issues with districts all over California. And there is, you know, I think you need to think very, very carefully about the impact of giving up some of your authority, because you have authority to make determinations about projects and timelines. This committee does not. I think you should think long and hard about giving up your authority to do that because you are elected by the people of Ventura, and this committee is not an elected committee. But you have your, you have the authority to amend the bylaws to your wishes.
Thank you.
And if I could just add, later in the agenda, the board has, is discussing under Item 14J, bond, excuse me, board representation of board-appointed committees. Should the board have an interest in having some additional oversight, the board could consider forming a bond subcommittee that works in coordination with staff to then provide direction. So that is also an update. Just wanted to provide that as an option.
No, that was my, that was my question, too. It's basically, the committee is to say, make sure we're spending the funds that they, the community voted for on the right things. That's what the committee is basically for, right?
Yeah, I just want to echo that the committee, or the community at large really wants to, you know, wants some say in this, at least have some participation. So I like that idea of having a subcommittee. I know we're supposed to have this Oversight Committee as part of our bond, as part of the deal. It's legal, it's law. So I echo that. A subcommittee would be something I'll go for.
So I have a couple of questions. One, I guess is more of a comment. The recommendation is for seven seats on this committee. I would really encourage us to consider making it an 11-member committee, in part because I think what's really important is that we have broad representation. I was part of the committee, or part of the campaign to pass the first parcel tax for VUSD and was on that Oversight Committee before being on the board. And one of our primary charges is to represent to the community how those funds are spent, to be those liaisons out to the broader community about the expenditure of those dollars that the community has entrusted us with. And I think the, within reason, the more voices that you can bring to that position to advocate and to explain to the community how those dollars are being used, that is helpful for building trust with the community. So I think that's a lot to put on seven members of the community. And I think because we represent such a broad area, that I would like to see us include more voices in that. But additionally, I think later on, we'll be talking about some of the facilities and site-specific committees that we'll be forming as part of the bond expenditures. And I would love to see us at least informally adopt more of a sounding board kind of process because one of the things that we do for the parcel tax is that we have that committee that we go to and ask questions, both after expenditures are made to audit the expenditures, but even before, to get their sense of, you know, how is this going to play in the community? We're asking these community members to volunteer their time, and I want to make sure that we're honoring that by giving them a job that actually has value, right? So not only stamping that, yes, indeed, we've certified that the district has spent those monies appropriately, but also giving them the opportunity to give us feedback on a more consistent basis about the things that they're hearing from the community about the choices that we, as a board, are making, right? So...
President Rodriguez, just for the public's knowledge, in the bylaws, it absolutely allows the board to add additional members. The seven is the, five are required by, as we stated, two are communities at large, community members at large, but there's no way that we would need to only have seven. And then in terms of the additional guidance to the staff, perhaps, again, if we, if the board were to consider having a bond committee, those additional types of guidance could be given to staff via that board subcommittee.
And just, if we do decide to increase it to 11 members, I think the 7-11 committee was really a fantastic committee because we had different members in the community from different areas. So maybe we can duplicate that, if possible, if there's enough applicants, like West Side, East Side, so on and so forth.
Maybe by district, to cover the whole district, like, you know, one from each district would probably be a good idea, so we can cover the whole community.
Can't forget OFU.
So with that, then that would mean bringing this back with those changes. Any other?
Doesn't it, doesn't it already allow us to make those changes?
Yeah, you could, excuse me.
Yeah.
You could, you could adopt it tonight because, I mean, it's okay, we can come back in a month, but you're not going to start, that committee's not going to start its work until you take the initial step of passing the resolution and the initial bylaws. And then we could make amendments to those bylaws and bring the bylaws themselves back at a next meeting as an option.
Yeah, I would move to approve the resolution because it already allows us to do everything that we want to do. So I move to approve.
I'll second that.
Thank you, votus follows.
Sorry, just to clarify. Move to approve with amendments or as presented?
From my understanding, I ask, I think it's already in the bylaws that we can make these changes if it's approved.
So you're proposing approving it as it is with the plan to revise it later?
Yes, because it gives us that option to do that. So I move to approve as is.
And I second that.
Okay. Votus follows. Trustee Forsythe.
Yes.
Trustee Peterson.
Yes.
Trustee Danenberg.
Yes.
And Trustee Rodriguez.
No, but largely just because I would rather, I would feel more comfortable making those changes before adopting it. But I recognize that I'm in the minority.
Thank you. Motion carries 3 to 1.
Okay. That brings us to Item 14C. Approval of Restructuring Fine Arts and Applied Arts Credits. Dr. Bayless.
Thank you very much, President Rodriguez. This was the item that was presented at the last board meeting, demonstrating the need to restructure so that graduation rates, elective courses of study, all UCA to G rates, et cetera, can be increased, including CTE pathway completion. So pleased to bring this to you for action.
Does anyone have any questions? No? Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Thank you. Votus follows. Trustee Forsythe.
Yes.
Trustee Peterson.
Yes.
Trustee Danenberg.
Yes.
And Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 4-0.
Item 14D. This is the Approval of Supplemental Novel Recommendation. And I have the other text. With the amendment to Agenda Item 14D, Approval of Supplemental Novel Recommended by the Supplemental Novel Adoption Committee Under Full Committee Review, Updated to Include the Title and Author from the Previous December 13, 2022 Board Item, Which the Title of the Book Is Stamped by Author Jason Reynolds and Ibnam Kendi, Publisher Little Brown Books for Young Readers and California Department of Education Approved Grade Levels 9 Through 12.
So we open this up to a full committee review, right?
Yes. And so just to clarify, we saw this last month, and the item was available for the public to comment or provide any feedback. Dr. Bayless, did we receive any public comment?
We received public comment this evening, but during the course of the time between the last board meeting and now where it was available for parents and the public, I did not receive any comment.
Move to approve.
I second.
Thank you. Votus follows. Trustee Forsythe.
Yes.
Trustee Peterson.
Yes.
Trustee Danenberg.
Yes.
And Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. Item 14E. Request for Consideration of Two New Courses, CTE Leadership, Internship-Directed Studies, and CTE Cap Organic Farm-to-Fork. And this is our first read. Dr. Bayless.
Yeah, thank you very much. I'd like to invite who's already here. Thank you very much, Dr. Rickard, to present this item to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Board President Rodriguez, Trustees, Dr. Castro, Executive Cabinet. It is my pleasure to bring forward to you two new courses, CTE courses, that we would like to have approved for use this coming fall. The first of it is the CTE Leadership Internship-Directed Studies. And this course is specifically for students who have completed a two-year pathway. As you know, in order to complete a pathway, a student needs to complete the concentrator course and the capstone course in the same pathway, and they become a pathway completer. Once they have done that, we've found that some of our students want to continue with a CTE course in a leadership or an internship capacity. So this course would be for students who want to either be in an internship, be in a leadership capacity in a CTSO, and that is a career technical student organization, such as FFA or HOSA or First Robotics. It could be for a student who wants to participate in an onsite paid or unpaid internship, like a shop manager, a lab assistant, or even a farm foreman, which we perceive as having to be in place in the next year or so. So this would be a way that the student could still be in a career pathway without not getting credit for being in there. So that's that course. Are there any questions for that one before I go on to the next one?
I have some questions. So for that, it seems like there would be individual students who are choosing to do that third year in a particular program. How would that go in terms of scheduling for the CTE teacher?
So just like in several of our courses right now, we have, what we would have a combination. So in the same period, like a period four, you'd have a concentrator and a capstone. And you could also have this internship, I'm sorry, this leadership course. So the teacher would carry up to three rosters within that period, and the students would be doing different things.
So would that course also then meet A to G requirements?
We are working on the A to G, but yes, it will eventually be A to G, yes.
So I guess my question is, would each individual CTE teacher be required to create an A to G compliant third-year course? Or that would automatically, it would fall under this umbrella leadership course?
It would be an umbrella leadership course. It would be an elective leadership course, and it would be, it would be flexible so that the teacher could use it for any of the courses. So any of our pathways. So it could be the Ag pathway, it could be DTAC, it could be culinary, depending on which pathway it is. It would just be the same course. The kids would just be doing different things.
Is this being generated based on interest from our CTE teachers to keep their kids a third year? Or based on elimination of the third-year course in many of our CTE pathways?
So the teachers are interested in this. We've also had students wanting to continue. And in the past, for example, in robotics, we've had students taking four years of robotics and kind of repeating, and repeating, and repeating. And this would give them the opportunity to not repeat and get a different experience. And it would, it's not just, I want to take a third year off the course. It's more of, I want to be a leader in that course, or I want an internship or a job in that course, in that pathway.
I guess I would love to understand a little, sort of, sounds a little reminiscent of being a TA, which we have eliminated, right, in many of our programs? So I want to make sure that what we're doing is a sort of authentic learning experience and not support, I don't know, like, so, and I feel like I would like some more information about that, how that specifically would be implemented. But I don't, I mean, I don't know if other people feel that way.
So President Rodriguez, I smile because I knew that that question would come up, and that was our concern when we wrote the course because we don't, that is not our intention, is having a TA in there. These students would literally have that additional responsibility, and it would almost be like a work-based learning experience within that pathway, that we would log and track in Career Hub, and that would also feature in our California Dashboard submissions. So no, it's not a TA. It's not someone who's going to be entering grades or taking attendance, absolutely not. It's a high-level experience for students. And that's why I really want you to see it as not just, I want to take a class for a third year because I like the teacher, or whatever it is. It's, I want a higher-level experience. So moving on to the next course, if I may, and that is our capstone course for our farm. It's the Organic Farm-to-Fork Course. The capstone, as you know, is the second of the two courses required for a pathway completion. And this is an exciting opportunity for our students. Currently, we have the concentrator, which is the aquaponics course, which is being taught at Pacific High School. Currently, we have two students from El Camino in there, and we have, I think, 17 students from Pacific for this first semester. And so for next year, for the kids that want to continue to complete the pathway, we need a capstone course. course. So this is an interdisciplinary-type course. We are including the history of agriculture in Ventura County, going all the way back to the Chumash. We feel that's super important for our kids to understand the heritage nature of agriculture in our community. They will learn about crop management using technology. So we have some drones coming in that I want you to come and see. I hope you do. These are huge drones that map the field, and then they're programmed by the students to go and spray organic whatevers on all of the trees. Very cool. I mean, it's like, I just pictured the Starship Enterprise doing this. I'm sorry. Let me, let me just geek out right now. But the technology, then the business and marketing aspect, because as you know, this farm is created to be a self-sustaining business, and the kids are going to market the leafy greens that hopefully will be growing in abundance in the next few months. And then also, all the aspects of business planning and project management. So, you know, we're super excited to offer this to our students for that capstone. Mike Etchert, our farm manager, will be teaching this, which is why it is not paid, his allocation is not paid out of district funds. This is strong workforce funds that will be paying that for this course and all the equipment, et cetera. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, I, this is our first reading, and we'll be bringing this back to you next month for approval.
Sorry, I feel like the bad apple here, but I have questions. How does this relate to the ag program at Ventura High School? And will those students have access to this concentrator or capstone course?
Absolutely. So currently, all of our students have access. This is our first year with these courses. So we did not do as good a job of advertising and making things available. So we're hoping next year, the concentrator will have students from across the district. How does it work with Amy's program at Ventura High School? So Amy works closely with Mike. And in fact, our next project is, and this is also through strong workforce programs, to enhance the ag program or the ag facility at Ventura High School. We're moving Amy from the hillsides to the flatlands near the softball field. In fact, Joe and I are meeting with Terry Allison tomorrow to delineate the fencing for that area. So we're working very closely with her. And the idea for Amy's program is to end up growing bananas and coffee, as well as other crops, again, to give our students an experience with the different things that grow in our county. And yes, coffee is becoming a big thing. Talk to Dave Armstrong. If you know Dave Armstrong, talk to him. He is like the guru of coffee. And his, his operation is fabulous. We got to go see it. Yeah.
Since it's called Farm to Fork, is it going to also dovetail with any of our culinary programs?
So absolutely. So since we will be growing all this fabulous produce, et cetera, part of it is going to go to our culinary programs, and they will be coming and working with Mike, and Mike will be going over there. And absolutely, yes. So we're still working on integrating all of it, and it's becoming a nice little web of excitement. But yes, absolutely, culinary is definitely a part of what we're going to be doing, as well as you know that. We have our wonderful field trips that are happening at the farm that also will benefit from our students who are learning all of this agriculture, coming and working with our students who are visiting the farm also.
Thank you.
Well, I just have one question about, are the fishing that are going to provide the fertilizer?
The fish are there. They are there. They are koi. We were going to do tilapia, and then people on our team got really, really excited about fish fries. And I'm like, no, we're not, I'm not getting any fish. So we're doing koi. They are there. Please come visit.
No, I'll be there. I've been waiting for the fish and the drone, so.
Okay, okay. When the drone is there, you will come and see the fish and the drones at one time. Would love to have you.
Thank you.
So this is a first read, but we do have the option of taking action tonight, if so interested.
Well, since we did have questions about a part of it, I recommend we bring it back.
See you next month.
I'll be here.
Okay. So item 14F, ratification of the Lexia agreement for 2223. This is a first read.
Thank you very much. I'd like to invite Dr. Mullenar up to the front, Executive Director of Ed Services. So, Dr. Mullenar, if you could present this item. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, President Rodriguez, members of the board. We're here to look at ratifying the program of Lexia English. Lexia gave us some licenses over summer school, so we had several teachers who were piloting licenses at no cost. We had a limited amount of time to practice during summer school, so they allowed us to continue with those free licenses at the start of the year in September. We opened it up to a larger group of teachers who wanted to pilot Lexia, and this is a program specifically for our emergent bilinguals to focus on higher levels of proficiency in the area, in grade levels K through six. It looks at the domains of listening and speaking, and then also grammar, and integrates that into various content areas like math, science, social science, and biographies. So with a focus on giving students an opportunity to practice academic language and listening to academic language.
Board members, questions?
Just as a sixth-grade ELA teacher, this is a wonderful program. I mean, yeah, I just wanted to say that, because I use it all the time.
With with these licenses, will all of our teachers have access, all our students that may want to use it?
So right now, we have, we had about 140 students who were a part of this pilot. And so we are asking for 200 licenses for 18 months. And so that will allow our current students and teachers to continue in this pilot. At the same time, as we continue our progress monitoring with our multilingual progress monitors, they meet with teachers and as they look at students, determine which multilingual learners are still not making progress with the current interventions, we are offering them an opportunity to pick up a license for that multilingual learner, with the goal that hopefully we'll use up all of those 200 licenses, and we will be able to look at our LPAC scores after this summative assessment in the spring, and show that we are, you know, making great strides with students moving up at least one proficiency level. So I hope so, yes.
So I'm not as familiar with it as Mr. Forsyth, so I wonder if you could just tell me some of the things we can expect to learn about our student progress from Lexia?
So right now, for example, it's recommended that students participate. It's a digital program, and there's also a teacher component where they could give direct instruction. Right now, our teachers have just been utilizing the digital component that's on iPads or their Chromebooks. Recommended amount of time is 20 minutes at least three times a week. About 60% of our students who are participating right now are meeting those minutes or exceeding those minutes in a, in a week right now. We've seen approximately an average of 60 minutes of academic discussion. So students have a chance to listen to stories, engage with material. They utilize their microphone to speak into the microphone, into the program, and it gives them immediate feedback on their responses, with recommended corrections to their speech. We've seen right now, on average, 60 minutes of students in a week participating, which correlates to about six minutes of academic language production, which we know about our multilingual learners. They get minimal amount of time to be able to speak in academic settings within a class period. So that's just what we've seen so far. Other bright spots, they get to practice listening and speaking over various curriculum. So it's not just happening necessarily like an English language arts component. It's really seen in the content areas, which really has been a focus for us in supporting our multilingual learners. Students are completing right now, it's been from September through November, they completed 24 units over 39 weekdays. And so they are staying engaged. We've had strong responses from parents. We've been able to offer it to our newcomers who are at the middle school, where you know you have very limited resources to be able to engage your newcomers at the middle school level. Parents have commented, at the middle school, they've been able to send it home with their Chromebook, and they can practice, continue that practice at home. Right now, our average for students has been 15 to 25 minutes per session, which most of our students participating at the second and third grade level, where we might normally see a plateau in that proficiency level, kind of at the, at a level two. And so the goal is, with this practice in academic discourse, they'll be able to push to the next level.
I really appreciate the extra explanation. It's really helpful. And then I would love to know, kind of, so this gets us through July. So would we be looking at getting some feedback on, on like, the full year's implementation at the beginning of next school year, to know whether or not there's interest in continuing it?
Definitely. So the hope is that after we complete our summative LPAC assessment in the spring, sometimes we get some of those scores before the end of the year, but definitely all of them by summer. So we should be able to, based on Lexia's research, track our students who participated, see what their summative LPAC score is in the spring, and determine if there was a greater point increase on their LPAC score compared to students who didn't participate in Lexia.
I know you said there was 60% compliance on the time. Did you go back to find out why the other 40% didn't comply?
So some of our students, we had two teachers at the kindergarten level who utilized Lexia. Those were the only two out of, I think it was 22 teachers who participated in the pilot. We had the two kindergarten teachers who did not want to continue. And so they struggled a little bit with students getting on the platform, continuing, just, they felt it wasn't something that they could really do independently in a, in a small group. So that makes up for that other percentage.
Okay, thank you.
You said there was a, the direct instruction was not used. Is there a reason why?
You know, we started this in the middle of a time when teachers were really maxed. And we were just amazed at the fact that we had 22 teachers who wanted to pilot this program. And I think it was because we were just really dipping our toe in the water with just the digital component.
Great, thank you. So this is a first read, but we do have the option to take action today if interested.
So go ahead and make that motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Vote as follows. Trustee Forsyth?
Yes.
Trustee Peterson?
Yes.
Trustee Danenberg?
Yes.
And Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item 14G, revisions to classified exempt hourly salary schedule. Ms. Crouch?
Great. Thank you, President Rodriguez and members of the board. This evening, we're recommending that the classified exempt salary schedule be approved. There are proposed modifications of wages to bring them in alignment with the newly increased classified represented salary schedule. And so on approval, these rates would be effective January 1st of this year.
Great. Questions? Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Vote as follows. Trustee Forsyth?
Yes.
Trustee Peterson?
Yes.
Trustee Danenberg?
Yes.
And Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries four zero.
The ratification of our contract for Assistant Superintendent of Business Services. Does anyone have any questions? No, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Vote as follows. Trustee Forsyth?
Yes.
Trustee Peterson?
Yes.
Trustee Danenberg?
Yes.
And Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries four zero.
Congratulations. It's official. That was a little bit tense there for a moment, right? But consideration of resolution 2303, continuing our authority to hold virtual meetings. You all know what this is. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I second.
Thank you. Vote as follows. Trustee Forsyth?
Yes.
Trustee Peterson?
Yes.
Trustee Danenberg?
Yes.
And Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Okay, board representation on board-appointed committees. So you all have the list of what we've agreed to thus far. So one option that was discussed earlier was adding a board representation to, to the bond oversight committee. I'm understanding that correctly, right? That's essentially what we were talking about?
I think, President Rodriguez, if I can amend my current previous statement or add clarification, what we would be, what the board has the opportunity to do is to generate a subcommittee. So it would be similar to the subcommittees you have in front of you, a subcommittee that works with staff, that then provides the guidance to everything that would happen with the, with the actual bond subcommittee, excuse me, the, the subcommittee itself. So that, you would act as a, as a guidance group to be able to work with staff as we work with the overall subcommittee. And, and actually, I'll take this opportunity, part of the reason it is for the public to know, there are requirements for people who participate on that committee. They cannot be employees of, of the district. They also can't be contractors of the district. So there are some requirements to committee members and how they, who they can be and what responsibilities they have.
So first, is there interest in the board in creating such a subcommittee? I'll just say, I would be interested in creating that subcommittee. And I would be interested in serving on that subcommittee. But I don't know.
I second that Sabrina's on the subcommittee.
Thanks, Calvin. We're going to meet on Wednesdays. But, so is there general interest in creating that subcommittee? And is there someone else who would like to serve as a member of that subcommittee? No, just me?
I will, I will be happy to serve.
Okay. Okay, any, other than that, any other changes, additions, deletions from the committee list that you received? So we're good? Did you have any questions for us regarding this specifically?
No.
No, okay. Okay, great. So then, do I have a motion to adopt this amended committee list?
Motion to adopt.
Go ahead, second.
Thank you. Vote as follows. Trustee Forsyth?
Yes.
Trustee Peterson?
Yes.
Trustee Danenberg?
Yes.
And Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries four zero.
Okay, this leads us to item 15A, our base level staffing. Dr. Castro?
Thank you, President Rodriguez. On the screen, you, you should have some handouts of what's being displayed publicly. There is a document that we will be referencing throughout this conversation, but do you have public comments? Although, I see Dan Nelson standing at the podium. I don't know if he's.
I don't have a paper for you. Did you have a?
I have a comment. I didn't know I had to just stand up here and be called on. That's cool.
Did you submit a public?
I did not.
Oh, so we can't take public comment then. Okay.
Yeah, I, yeah.
Would you like to complete a paper for?
I would love to complete a paper. I'll be, I'll be back in a second.
Okay.
Okay, so the, the documents that you have in front of you and the documents that is displayed publicly, we are calling a draft VUSD base staffing for 2324. Before we get into discussion of this item and before staff presents what the concept is, as it is brought forth as a conference item, we are not requesting any action this evening. What we are requesting ultimately is input and feedback from the board, as we use this tool to help us shape what base level staffing looks like in the 2324 school year. What does that mean? Base level staffing is a general fund contribution to these positions and is, is not inclusive in any way of all the funds that are required to fund staff at a site. So we have site funds that are generated through a local control funding formula contribution. We have funding that is designated through categorical funds like Title I, Title II, Title III. What we are looking at here is a base level staffing formula that we would use as, to calibrate the conversations that we have on our elementary campuses, our middle school and our high school campuses. You'll note that any campus that is unique, or alternative campuses or alternative programs are not noted here, because what we would do is use the input you provide tonight as guidance for subsequently developing those base level staffing recommendations as well. Okay, and so you have comments?
Yes, so. First, we'll go with our public comment, Mr. Nelson. Mr. Nelson, you have two minutes, because you've been given three minutes already, and I'm going to keep the time here if that's all right.
Absolutely. This will take less than that. That's actually not my comment. I'm pretty sure it's Carol Peake's comment, but here we go. I'm just going through this and realizing that we have teacher librarians here listed for comprehensive six through eight, and also magnet and comprehensive high schools, but I don't see library technicians listed here. And I have always promised that I would never let a minute go by without mentioning the library technicians when it comes to supporting the teach, the libraries and media centers. So Dr. Castro is well aware of my deep and abiding love of the library technicians and how they help things function. So I thought it would be remiss if not mentioning that. I'd love to see them up there. Possibly, it's going to be coming up, and I just didn't see it in the list. Thank you.
Board members, do you have questions or comments?
No, but this is a, a living, breathing document, right? So it's just, this is just a base draft, and we'll just see this ongoing?
That's correct. Trustee Peterson, as the month is January, we will be coming forward to you, probably the next opportunity. I know that we have yet to schedule it, but we will have a special board meeting on budgets. This document and the implications for overall budget would be represented in that conversation. In subsequent board meetings, regularly scheduled board meetings in February and March, additional iterations of this would come forward. It's also important to note, for our staff, but also for the public, that as we determine the, the staffing at our school sites and the needs at our school sites, the students generate that need, and the need is supported at the district office level by positions that is following that need. And so And so we will be engaging in similar conversations for district office level positions, whereas you don't, you won't necessarily see a VUSD base level staffing for district office positions because you have one position often for one purpose. But it would be aligned with this process in terms of overall transparency as we go forward between now and March, but certainly for the rest of the year, not necessarily just stopping at March. We will be sharing to the public what those reductions look like as we continue to stipulate them. Finally, what I'll add is, I think it's important to note that although in the previous meeting we received a letter from the County Office of Education indicating that the, per the negotiations agreed to, that we needed to engage in some permanent reductions, I want to make sure that the community understands that our, the level of significance of declining enrollments that our district is experiencing would necessitate these actions as well. So I want to make sure that we don't necessarily say, oh, this is because of negotiations. The broader issue is declining enrollment. Negotiations and the contract that we'll be looking forward to is also just an additional pressure that we need to respond to, but it is certainly not the reason that we're engaging in this process.
Thank you, and I'm going to thank you in advance for all the hard work you need because we definitely need to have a base level to find out where we are, so I think this is an important document. And I also want to appreciate, I appreciate you saying that we want to be transparent and we don't want teachers to think that this is a result of the negotiations. It's a result of declining enrollment and other factors. So I don't want people thinking that just because we did the negotiation that we have to shrink the staff. There's a lot of factors that came into this, and so we want to be very transparent about it, and I appreciate this document and the work that went into it.
Yeah, I also want to appreciate staff for putting this together. It was probably a laborious process. And, but my concern and question is really focusing on the counseling. Now, the pandemic and other issues have really affected our student body. Now, we have a mental health issue, especially in this, in our country, in the state. So I just want you, if you can, describe counseling. What is counseling and what are the mental services, mental health services that we provide?
Thank you, Trustee Forsythe, for the question. I'm going to start the answer and then I'll turn it over to staff to add. For the public to note, when we see counselor with an asterisk next to it in the elementary domain, the reason for that is, is that we are not contractually obligated to provide counseling services to elementary students. That's not in the contract. However, the direction of the board last year, staff was very responsive to the board's direction in that we recognize the extreme need that the pandemic has placed on our students and families. And so consequently, we've added a tremendous amount of support, in particular for elementary counseling. But that's not the only type of SEAL or mental health service that we provide. We have SAP counselors, which I'm going to ask staff to talk about. We've brought on social workers, and then we also have, what we have referral services and other supports that we've provided that assist students and families to make connections to mental health providers through a referral process, and that is through Carisala. So we have lots of connections to be able to provide mental health services. So Dr. Bayless, if you can provide some additional detail, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Castro. I think that's really well said. Counseling is a very broad category, and there are many different support providers under that scheme, and so I think you outlined some of the specific roles. SAP counselors, Student Assistance Program counselors, they're the ones that connect students with outside organizations and therapy, and that was kind of what we call tier two or tier three level of counseling. Our regular, what used to be called guidance counselors at our high schools, they are operating sort of three domains, academic guidance, social emotional support and college and career. And then we have, like you said, social workers. We also have our wellness centers where we have some clinicians, so there's a whole portfolio of different kinds of counselors involved. And obviously, counselors at the elementary level of those three domains that I mentioned, social emotional support, college career counseling, academic guidance, they might be doing more on the social emotional side versus a middle school counselor versus a high school counselor in sort of the base tier one counseling level. But we also have our UC A to G counselors, formerly known as college and career counselors, funded by our UC A to G improvement grant, and they're centered on, as the grant, it's called out by the state to support specific marginalized, underperforming, underrepresented groups in colleges to increase their A to G rate, to increase their level of eligibility for applying to colleges.
Thank you, Dr. Bayless, and I'll just take the opportunity to make some connections. As this draft of the VUSD base staffing, this is our generally funded individuals. Dr. Bayless listed through several other types of counselors. Some of those are grant funded through contracts with the, it's passed through, through Ventura County Office of Education in partnership with Ventura County Behavioral Health. We have counselors that have been moved into a one-time fund, our A to G improvement grant funds. And then going forward, we have other one-time funds that are available to us. Those, the amounts are constantly in flux, but we have other one-time funds. So the design between the draft VUSD base staffing is to determine what is it at a school site that is expected based on, and often, the ratio of students to those staff members.
Okay, thank you so much. It sounds like we have a lot of supports for our students. Just final question, I don't want me to throw you in a girdball, Dr. Bayless. How long is typically the referral process?
For what kind of service?
For students with, for a student that has a mental health crisis or an issue, maybe associated with an IEP that they need, they need that counseling service.
Well, depending upon the kind of crisis and depending upon the level or the setting, grade level or setting, let's say we're in secondary and there's a crisis, there's typically a risk assessment that is performed by an administrator and a counselor, and that, those supports could be offered that student within the hour, depending upon the level of crisis. So if it's a referral to an SAP counselor where that would be a referral coordinating an outside community-based organization or provider of therapy or other support services, or if it's what we call a BRIM, which is pulling in parents and the entire family into a counseling environment, that could take anywhere between a couple of weeks or a month, depending upon the nature of the crisis. But again, if it is really a crisis in the moment, there are supports that can be provided to the student within, in the moment, within the hour.
Thank you so much, and I appreciate that, making that determination and that differentiation between, or that difference between mental health services and counseling, because if the public sees like, oh, there's only one counselor for 500 students, like, no, there's, we have a lot of support. So explaining that really does help. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll just take the opportunity, because part of your question related to students with disabilities, I think it's important to note for the public that any service that is directed specifically to a student with a disability would go through the IEP process, but that doesn't necessarily mean that should there be a general group being held on a campus, there would be nothing that, other than parent participation and parent approval for it, for them to not be able to participate in the type of group that's being held on the campus.
Great, thank you so much.
This is going to probably create a lot of concerns by a lot of people, so it's something that I'm hoping you're going to put on our district website so people can review it and know that it's a draft and it's in flux and changing. And then maybe the reasons why we're doing it, so people understand that it's not just a whim, that there's real reasons, maybe even with a copy of Dr. Morales's letter attached or so people understand.
Dr. Dennenberg, thank you for the guidance. As this is the first formal step of communicating what is a large process, another piece of this which we haven't seen yet, because it's, this is a step in the development, is actually using this tool, a base level staffing for the district as ultimately a communication tool. I've shared an example from what we felt was an exemplary district with Marie Anne Keros, so we'll be reviewing that and finding something that is a right fit for our district, and it will be ultimately a communication tool.
Let Sabrina before you go. Do you think it would be helpful, since the question comes up with counselors and other funds being used, should this be draft base staffing using general funds? So people know that it's not, because sometimes, some people will read this and be like, like you said, one counselor? How is that? Maybe using general funds will let people know that we have other avenues to have counselors or other support, but this is only base staffing using general funds.
Trustee Peterson, that's fantastic guidance, we'll absolutely do that. And again, to build on that, for example, if we have campuses that are, that have Title I students, which means they have higher and duplicated student counts, in no way would this limit our ability through title funds or any other categorical fund, limit our ability to provide additional services and supports for the students that generate those funds and are dedicated, those funds are dedicated to serving.
So I have a couple of comments and questions, I guess. The first question is, how are we supporting our principals in having these conversations with their staff? Because this is the kind of thing that causes panic, right? And so that. And then secondly, where is the flexibility? So, you know, as a site leader, if I determine that, you know, maybe some of what's being allocated isn't necessarily consistent with what I see our primary needs are, where, what is the opportunity to kind of personalize this to my site?
Thank you, President Rodriguez. I'll start and then I'll invite staff to continue conversations that we've had with staff, if you can think anecdotally without obviously using a principal's name. But the first step is that we met, our executive team met with our principals to share this document and to receive their input, and they had a significant amount of input. And as you stated, their primary concern is how they're going to continue to provide a high level of service for their students and their community while experiencing, in many cases, declining enrollment on their campus. So I want to make sure that I state that definitively. They are, they want to do the best thing that they can for their students, for their staff and their families. While we recognize that we may have staffing on a campus that was originally placed there years ago, when they may have had 100 more students, or in some cases, 200 or 300 more students. In terms of where we go from here, we've started to have some creative conversations with them. As they are wrapping their heads around this, they're already coming to us with some solutions, and so I'll turn that over to Gina and Greg to add.
Yes, so yesterday during our conversation that Dr. Castro described, we did have a site leader who shared exactly that example, a very specific example at their particular site, that they felt that, you know, there were these particular supports in place, but they didn't seem to have significant need in our current conditions, and felt that that resource or that allocation could be reallocated to something that might be a greater priority, given our current set of conditions at that particular school site. And so we appreciated that level of conversation and detail because, you know, as we've talked about frequently, those folks that work at the sites on a day-to-day basis really have a different understanding of what the needs are. And so it's really essential as we begin these planning purposes and these base level staffing that we hear from the voices on each site campus. As well as another site leader had shared that they did feel like some of these base level staffing would provide an essential base level support, and they felt that they could successfully, continue to successfully function as a school site based on this level of base level support. And so we just really value all of the voices so that we can make the best and most informed decisions.
Sorry, before you go, Dr. Bayless, you know, I know we've all seen years where a campus that was previously kind of, you know, humming right along gets a group of kids that just have very different needs than the previous year's group of kids. So would a system like this still allow us as a district to bring in additional resources where needed to address issues that pop up?
I think there's two different approaches we could take to that, and we don't have to take one or the other, we could take both. I think one piece is that we can denote when we have made shifts based on, you know, current site input. We can denote what those changes are, the years for those changes, as well as have a process where, when we have the beginning of the school year, we do sometimes see those things that aren't able to be forecasted with numbers. And once we see the students and they're in that experience, sometimes things come up, and so to have systems and processes in place for reviewing those needs in the moment and add those as needed.
I was just going to offer too, by way of extending the answer about how we're engaging principals, is that we have high school principals' meetings, middle school principals' meetings, and elementary principal meetings monthly, and this is agendized for that. So for example, I lead the high school and the middle school principals' meetings, and tomorrow we're having a high school principals' meeting, so this is one of two, one of three things on our agenda to get feedback on. So that kind of feedback that Gina described that we received in the K-12 meeting is going to be even expanded upon and extended. So again, I think that the point of this being a draft and it really, we're at the starting point of getting feedback from our principals is absolutely accurate and important to note.
My other comment is really just that I think it's great that we're being very transparent about this and getting feedback, but I also think it would be great to be equally transparent about the process for non-site staff, right? So I know you shared that that process will be derived based on the needs of sites, but I think, you know, whenever you're making changes, our site staff is going to want to see that we're looking internally as much as we're looking externally, right? And so to make sure that we're not giving the impression that we're making these choices only on the backs of our site staff, but that really this is a systems-wide approach to rightsizing the district and that we're being as critical in our own house as we are in others, so just comment. I know you have addressed this already with us, but I just wanted to make sure that the community understands that as well.
President Rodriguez, absolutely, I'll affirm that that will be our charge, and I'll add that things that we're not talking about, for example, relate to the board priorities. And so one of the board priorities was a focus on literacy. And so as we look at one-time funds, we would then say, okay, we see what those, the impacts to our sites would look like. We look at our data, for example, Dr. Molinar was talking about, some exciting things that are happening with learning, but we also know, not just because of the pandemic, but because we have certain student populations that demonstrate higher need. Then we look at, okay, what is, what are the school site needs and then what are the district needs to be able to monitor those and those programs and support those programs to effectively implement the board guidance that we have, especially around literacy? So there are many, this conversation is a very large conversation. We absolutely are not reflecting all of the people and positions that exist because we also have the LCAP. So there are lots of places, but ultimately, where we want to start is our school site because that's the, that is the unit of change. Everything that happens, just happens at the school site, and we build out from there.
Great, thank you. And this will continue to come back to us throughout the next few months. Okay, so item 15B, I have two public comments. Mr. Schaefer, if you're still here? And then Marticos Cuevas. The presentation was linked in our agenda. Yeah.
It wasn't one paragraph that said there will be a conversation about?
There's a link on that.
Yeah.
That, a blue link there, you should.
Yeah, it's a hyperlink.
Yeah, it's a hyperlink to.
So that title, if you click on it, it'll take you into the actual document.
I did.
Yeah, there's no.
Maybe I did it wrong.
No, there's no adjacent, there's no.
I think you may be referencing a different item where there is a presentation.
Oh, okay. Sorry, so apparently, no, there is not.
Okay, then.
Yes, unfortunately, this is trying to provide public.
Okay. So I am, my name is Stephen Schaefer, I'm president of the San Bueno Ventura Conservancy for Preservation, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit group in town that advocates for and educates about historic preservation. And so when I saw your list or that you were going to have a topic tonight about surplus properties, I figured that, you know, there are certain school sites that are disused, repurposed on potentially the surplus properties list that I don't know about, because I don't know it. But I thought I would talk a little bit about the historic preservation of some of those sites and the fact bit about the historic preservation of some of those sites, and the fact that, from my understanding, some of them have been proposed as national register sites, or they've been surveyed as national register sites in the city surveys, or local landmarks in the city surveys. But from my understanding, the school district has never done a sort of a study to understand what is historic and what isn't historic that you own. And to think about some of those things, I was writing some quick notes here. You can think about some schools. I went to Poinsettia, which I'm not sure is historic. So I went to Buena High School, which the auditorium is definitely historic, but is the rest of the campus. And we have these things, you know, is Anacapa historic, is Lincoln School historic, Lincoln School is designed by one of the most famous architects in town, Harold Burkett, and so is Will Rogers School. So the building that we're standing in now, even though it's a relatively new building, is also probably historic, not because of the school district, but because of Vetco. So understanding the assets that you have and how historic they are allows you to sort of deal with them. The albatross, or the elephant in the room, would probably be Ventura Avenue School. And Ventura Avenue School is boarded up, and it really is in need of maintenance, restoration, and all the things that are not the highest priority for the district. But it's on a big lot with a lot of potential, and it would be great to have something really amazing happen there. So understanding what's historic at that site, what's not historic at that site, and figuring out how to make the best use of it.
Thirty seconds?
From an adaptive reuse standpoint, or possibly a sale to an interested party of just that school, which is difficult to deal with, which leaves you a lot of opportunity for the rest of the site, the rest of the parcel. And the Conservancy would be happy to be a partner, or talk to you about that, or be involved in any way we can. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And I apologize that there is not, that the presentation isn't linked, but this is not an action item. It's a conference item, so this is just a conversation. And you're certainly welcome after this meeting to reach out to any and all of us to share more specific comments. Mr. Cuevas?
Actually, my comments were going to be on behalf of Helen Aloy, and she's actually here now. So if you just cross my name out and put hers and let her speak, then yeah.
Hey, good evening. I am so happy to see everyone. I didn't think I would make it, but I'm here now. So, good evening. Thank you for your time. My name is Helen Aloy, and my comments tonight are made on behalf of the Westside Community Development Corporation WINS program. So that's Westside Innovative Housing Solutions Program. We mostly focus on developing affordable housing strategies while keeping economic development in mind. So this is primarily focusing on the Westside area. So firstly, I would like to thank this board and all of the school district staff for just being so open and collaborative, and having that kind of inherent nature about this entity, because we've found it very easy to reach out to board members, to other school district staff, to just begin to have a dialogue about what of our, some of our community goals are. So, you know, we really pride ourselves on pouring our heart and soul into the projects that we're working on for the Westside. And kind of like Steve Schaefer said, that when we look at the Avenue School, we see so much potential, but we also see a property that needs some tender love and care, and could probably be a little bit cumbersome when it does come time to cite that property for sale. But I want to let you know that you have a wealth in your network. You have so many partners, whether it be state, assembly members, board supervisors, local leaders, groups like the WCDC, labor unions, who all would support an adaptive reuse of that property. And I just want to let you guys know that we're standing here ready to work alongside with you on our shared goals. And whether it be workforce housing with potentially a vocational trade school aspect, we're going to stand behind you guys and be there for you. So thank you.
Thanks, Helen.
Thank you, President Rodriguez. Dr. Barstad, if our team is here, if they can make their way to the podium, okay, and as they are making their way to the podium, I'll just introduce the item, and I'll ask our team members who will be speaking to introduce themselves when they get to the podium. But tonight, as already stated, this is a conference item. We are going to be, you're going to be hearing a lot of information. We're going to try and be as succinct as possible, but ultimately, at the end of the conversation, there will be two things that we're requesting. One of them is, we would like to see or to hear consensus in our request to seek a waiver. Mr. Saldani is going to speak to that, and we are going to be asking for some input after providing some information in terms of some uses of these two properties. And so on the agenda, the properties that we'll be speaking to today are the Educational Services Center, the property where we're sitting now, and the Avenue School. These were designated prior as surplus property. My time is up. And so it looks like our people are in place. That was perfect timing. Thank you. Well done. So if our, if our speakers can please introduce themselves and their roles.
Good evening, everyone.
If you can step to the microphone, because it is being recorded. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
I'm David Saldani. I'm an attorney with Atkinson-Andelson, and I'm assisting the district on the legal side of this process. Do you want us to go through first, or as we come up?
So if you could all introduce yourselves, so that way the board knows who is here, and the public as well.
Good evening, Board, and Dr. Castro. My name is Dawn Dyer. I'm president of Dyer Sheehan Group here in Ventura. We're local land use consultants and real estate market analyst. Thank you. And I'll just mention my business partner, Paul Sheehan, who's our land use guru, is also joining me this evening.
And although not up, and will not be speaking initially, we also have Dr. Barstad and Terry Allison available for any questions as we proceed. And so if there aren't any questions about the item, we can move forward with the information. President Rodriguez?
No, no questions yet. I guess, well, the first question is, it really would have been great to list the properties on the agenda so that we, yeah, so that we have that conversation piece. But please continue.
Well, thank you. Good evening, members of the board, superintendent, staff, public. I'm going to be talking to you about the legal process associated with the disposition of the site that we are sitting in this evening. I'm going to talk first about where we've been. I'm going to tell you where we are now, and then talk a little bit about where we would like to go. And I'm going to refer back to the two asks that the superintendent mentioned, that we would like direction from you. First, where we've been. This board has previously adopted a resolution declaring this site to be surplus and authorizing its disposition. That takes us to where we are now. The next step in that process is a notification step. We're required by law to send out notifications to certain public agencies, cities, counties, parks and rec departments, housing authorities, et cetera, notifying them of the declaration of surplus and the availability of this process, or of the site, so that they could offer to purchase that's the site. Though I will tell you that in 20 years of doing this, I've never had a public agency take us up on that. It is nevertheless a requisite part of the process, that we do have to extend that invitation to those agencies. They each get 60 days in which time they have to then submit a response back if they're interested in engaging us in a discussion about the purchase. What normally follows under the statute is essentially a public bid process, and it's basically an auction. We request written proposals from individuals. They provide us their best offer for the property, and we would dispose of it to the highest bidder. We are not recommending that that be the process that we follow with respect to this site, because of its size, its location, and its unique characteristics and place in this community. It really wouldn't lend itself well to that type of a courthouse steps auction scenario. Instead, what we're recommending is to utilize a much more strategic and thoughtful process, utilizing a request for qualifications, followed up by a request for proposals. And in that process, we can include other things like district priorities for the use of this site. And in order for us to be able to use that process, we need to be excused from complying with the public bid sale part of the law. And the way that we can be excused from that is to obtain a waiver from the State Board of Education. It's a fairly commonly granted waiver for property disposition. And as you know, the state board only meets every other month. They have a very long lead time. So one of the asks tonight is to allow us to proceed with that process, so that we can have, we can be ready to engage in an RFQ-RFP process. Important to note, obtaining the waiver doesn't mandate that you do anything. It just gives you the flexibility. If you want to proceed with an RFQ-RFP process, it allows you to do that. And the waiver process, from a procedural standpoint, is no different than other waivers you may have been involved with in the past, class size reduction waiver, bond capacity waiver. Essentially, you conduct a public hearing after you've received feedback from your labor partners, from your school site councils, input from the public during the public hearing. Following that hearing, if you approve the filing of a waiver, it's submitted electronically, and then it gets on the state board's agenda. The approval of that waiver will enable us to then proceed with the much more strategic and deliberative RFQ-RFP process. So our ask of you tonight, it's actually threefold. I'm going to add another ask. Ask number one, we would like to commence with the notification process that's required, with or without a waiver. We have to send those notices out, giving public agencies an opportunity to engage us in an offer to purchase. Number two, we'd like you to authorize us to proceed with the waiver process, ideally putting a waiver public hearing as early as the next board meeting, or at least in February, because again, the state board only meets every other month, and there is a very long lead time to get on that agenda. So that covers the next steps in the process. Dawn's going to talk a little bit more about the land use aspects and priorities. But I wanted to give you the opportunity to ask any questions about the process before we move on.
Did you say three ask? Because I got the notification and then the waiver process.
That's two, and then the priorities. Hearing your priorities and your thoughts on the use of this site would be the, our third ask.
Do you want to do that part now, or do you want to allow Ms. Dyer to go first?
Well, that's up to the board. I'm happy to answer any questions about the process part, if you want to address those questions now, or if you want to hold those questions to the end. We'll do it however you'd like.
What would you prefer?
Just go ahead and ask questions now. Yeah. The first question that I have for you would be, if a city were to say they wanted this property, do they have to pay fair market value for it, or is it, do they get it at some type of reduced rate?
Fair market value.
Thank you.
So I'll ask, so I guess I'm, I guess concerned. It sounds like that you're asking us to essentially give you guidance and not quite take action, but give direction on action without being agendized as an action item. So that makes me uncomfortable when this is such an important asset for the community.
So let me provide some clarification. This board has already authorized the disposition previously in a prior resolution. But given the passage of time, and given the election of new board members, we thought it prudent to come back in front of this body and say, we'd like to start now at this time. But the board did approve it previously by authorizing not only the declaration of the site as surplus, but then following that with the authorization to dispose of the property.
Yeah, so I was on the board at the time. This property was surplus, as was Mr. Danenberg. But at that time, no direction was given to begin the process, right? And so essentially, what you're asking us now is to begin the process, but that's, but it's not agendized as an action item. So that's kind of my question, is that it feels a little disingenuous to give direction on a non-action item that is, I think, I mean, judging by the public comments we received, without it being agendized as an action item, I'm guessing the public would have comments. So that's just a concern I have.
Appreciate you raising that concern.
Yeah, because I would, like, I wasn't on the board during that time either. So I think we would, I wouldn't know what questions to ask right now, actually. And I don't, if I don't know what questions to ask, then I wouldn't know what direction to give.
It sounds like if I could recommend, and since we don't have any questions about the waiver process, if we could continue to hear the rest of the presentation from Dawn, that would probably sound appropriate.
Thank you.
Good evening. It might be helpful to first forward and identify the properties a little more clearly. So as has been mentioned, VUSD needs to access the equity in real properties that have already been deemed surplus to your mission. The first of those sites is the property where we're located now, the Stanley Avenue site, next slide, please, which is nearly 25 acres, located right here at Stanley Avenue near the 33 freeway. The second property, next slide, please, is what's been talked about a little earlier this evening, the Avenue School property, donated, denoted here with the star, next slide, please, and outlined here. So successful disposition of district-owned property for future development can generate important revenues to benefit our schools. As good stewards of district resources, this board has a fiduciary responsibility to try to maximize the value of all of your assets, including the surplus property. Now, at this time, though, at the same time, there may be other goals that the board would like to consider as additional priorities or strategies for the development of district-owned land. For example, the district could choose to prioritize the development of family-style residential on your properties, which could help boost student enrollment and create additional ADA revenue, which is very important, as we've been talking about earlier. The purpose of this discussion this evening will be to help identify district priorities and to determine the relative importance of using the surplus property to meet other district goals while balancing the need to prioritize the net revenue that can be unlocked by disposition of these sites. It's important that we clarify district priorities before we put the properties out to the development community through a request for qualifications and a request for proposals process. It might also be helpful, as we walk through this, to try to think about the property through the lens of the ultimate developer, and understand that some restrictions that VUSD, or the city or community, might wish to impose upon the property could ultimately impact the market value and perhaps result in less revenue to the district from disposition of these assets. One key issue is whether the district wants to prioritize the inclusion of affordable workforce housing for VUSD employees, and to require this as a selection criteria during the RFP process. When considering this option, it's important to note that while the city already requires a certain percentage of any new development to include affordable housing, by including a larger percentage or significant amount as workforce affordable housing, could impact the ultimate net equity that the property would generate to the district. Now, in a moment, we'll be seeking input and guidance from the board. Now, in a moment, we'll be seeking input and guidance from the Board as to whether the RFP should require respondents to include VUSD workforce affordable housing, and if so, at what level. Also, with the disposition of the Stanley Avenue property, the district will need new ESC offices. Staff is currently conducting a study to identify the district's future office needs and to consider whether there are other available sites currently in Ventura that could meet your needs, possibly on other district-owned properties, or perhaps renting or acquiring another site from, or another property from a non-district entity. The district could alternatively decide to retain a portion of the Stanley Avenue site for construction of new ESC offices. If so, we would obviously need to make this clear during the process of offering the site to, as disposition for development. The value of land for development is dependent upon a number of factors, which are considered site constraints and opportunities. One important site constraint or opportunity includes land use regulations that apply to the property that affect the level and type of development that could ultimately go on the property, and again, could impact the ultimate value of the site to the district. Fortunately, with prompt action, we have a unique opportunity to work collaboratively with the city to seek new land use designation for district properties that are consistent with development priorities that this Board identifies for your surplus land. In November of 2020, the City of Ventura began the process of updating its general plan, which is a state-required policy document that establishes a community's long-term vision for growth. General plans must be updated periodically with robust community input. The General Plan Advisory Committee, or GPAC, was formed to work with the city's general plan team and to act as ambassadors to the community to bring in additional community input into this process. The general plan team and GPAC members have been working to identify and develop preferred land use alternatives that will guide city growth and development through the year 2050. This creates a valuable opportunity for VUSD to identify and articulate your priorities for development of any surplus properties and to work with the city and community to seek general plan land use designations that reflect your goals and that could enhance revenues to our schools. Given the current GPAC schedule, timing is of the essence in clarifying the district's land use and development priorities for these surplus sites. So with that in mind, we would really like to invite the Board now to provide your thoughts, ideas, questions, and any input that you have on specific land use, development priorities, or other goals that you may have when it comes to your surplus properties.
I have a question. I'm a little confused, and I think if someone that worked here was listening to this meeting, that it's a foregone conclusion that we're selling this property. And I think, I mean, when, I guess, it sounds like someone has already made the decision that we're selling it, and you're asking us to say, what type of person do we want to sell it to? But I don't remember being part of any conversation of saying we're selling it. And I don't know when it, when that happened. So like, I'm very confused, and I'm very concerned about people who are listening thinking that the place that they work is already worth, we're in the process of selling it. And I don't even know about it.
Mr. Saldani, let me just provide some context here. Mr. Saldani is going to talk about previous action that a previous Board took. Part of the questions that Dawn is giving you the opportunity to just provide input is, should we consider selling the property? That's a question. Should, is that something that we should consider? What we're not requesting is, are we, are, you know, tonight, are you deciding that we are selling the property? That is not the question. The question is, what are types of uses in terms of this umbrella of disposition? What are things that we should be considering when we think about these properties that have already been determined to be surplus properties? So that's a great place to start the conversation. So Mr. Saldani, if you could take it from there.
Wait, hold on. If, if, okay, I understand what you're saying, but if I'm listening to this, right, if it's already designated as surplus, surplus means it's extra. We don't need it. So if you're saying, you're asking me a question, how should we use it, but you've already designated as surplus, that means we're getting rid of it. You're not, you're not asking me a question about what should we do with it. You're saying, who should we sell it to, and what should we tell that person if we sell it to, what they can do with it, not what we should do with it. Surplus means we're getting rid of it.
That's correct.
Yes.
The Board has-
We've inherited surplus properties for 30 years that we stole.
So that's not the direction she's just asking about right now? Because everything that I, everything that I was listening to was, when you sell it, what should that person do with it? Not what should we do with it?
Well, the Boards made the decision to surplus the property. Inherent in that decision is the fact that we're not going to need it in the future. Now, that doesn't mean you have to sell it. You can lease it. You can hold it. There's a number of things, but I want to back up a step because I want to offer a suggestion. Just hearing some of the comments already from this Board and recognition that, you know, we do have some new Board members, and we have some, I know, members of the public that are interested in this topic. One thing that we've done in some other districts that I would just offer as a suggestion for you to consider would be to have a separate workshop, if you will, that would enable more of kind of a dialogue. We can, you know, in a more, in a less time-constrained fashion, we can have just a great dialogue back and forth. We can walk through the history of the properties, the history of the committees, the actions the committees took, some of the options that we have, whether it's a sale, whether it's a lease, whether it's a hold. We can have all those conversations. It does feel, to me, there's a lot of information that I recognize that you're hearing. And so just, that's something for you to consider, whether it would make sense for this body to have a separate workshop where we can take some time and have that dialogue in a much more productive manner, perhaps.
Yeah, I have similar concerns about setting priorities when we haven't heard from the public generally. I was on the 7-Eleven committee, and it was a real struggle to kind of say, this is what the public wanted, just being on the committee. So the West Side is a, many of our West Side residents have went to that school, Avenue School. And if we're starting this process, we're saying, this is what their priorities are as a school board, they're going to feel left out of that conversation. So I think we need to kind of slow down that bit. However, it sounds like the waiver is a different process, correct? So the waiver has nothing really to do with, it's just to say to the state-
It gives us a tool.
It gives us a tool. So it doesn't sound like that's, but we don't have to use that tool. Okay.
But then again, it's not agendized, so can we even say today?
To come back as its own public hearing, it would be agendized on a future date. This is just to kind of give you a sense of what are the steps in the process. But, you know, to your point about the community on the West Side, I think a workshop would be a great venue and an opportunity where they could kind of participate so you can, while you're hearing this information, they can hear this information, and you can be getting that input in real time from the public while we have those conversations. So just an idea.
And it would be helpful to have that workshop at the sites, if we can. Maybe not Avenue. You don't want to be near that asbestos. But here, maybe that might be an option.
Okay.
Yeah, I feel very similarly that I think this, it feels like we have the cart before the horse on this. And having gone through the whole 7-Eleven process, which James didn't mention he was chair of, so, but, you know, I still feel like there's, there's some steps that are missing in this that, at least as a Board member, I feel like I don't have the tools to have the conversation that it sounds like we're being asked to have.
We certainly want you to feel like you have the information that you need to have that meaningful conversation. So I think a workshop would be a good start for that.
Then I want to thank the Board for the direction. Part of starting the conversation in public is to accomplish exactly what you're talking about, which is to alert the public that there are processes that are formal processes that we need to begin. There is no right way or right time to start this conversation. We just needed to start the conversation. So we appreciate the direction. And so that way, the public is aware, hopefully you have an opportunity to hear the options that are, that are coming ahead of us. This Board has had conversations already about educated workforce housing. That is a part of the conversation, and we're being responsive to public demands in that. So that is one piece of an overall process. And we have some special Board meetings coming up, and perhaps this could be a part of a special Board meeting as well.
Dr. Castro, if I may? One item I'd just like to, again, underline, though, for the Board to understand, to the extent that there may be a desire for uses on either of these sites that are not currently allowed under the current general plan land use designation and corresponding zoning, to the extent that we can engage with the community and the Board, and within the timeframe that the city is still working on its general plan update and bring the community into that dialogue, it would be a benefit to the district in that if you determine ultimately that, for example, family housing is a priority on one of your sites, such as this property that's not currently zoned appropriately, there would be a cost benefit to including an update or an amendment to that general plan land use designation zoning through the city's process, as opposed to the school district having to apply as a discrete applicant or an ultimate developer of the site, if that's the direction that the district decides to go. So that's just one timing issue that I would like to bring to your attention that would be helpful if we could keep in mind as you move forward through this process. Thank you.
That is exactly why I sit on the GPAC. And Mr. Freeman, who's in the back there, also a GPAC member, and we have been having those conversations for 18 months now. So we'll continue that, but I agree that it's an important opportunity that this Board has been taking for many months.
Thank you for your time.
Just a couple of things real quick before they leave. Would it, can we get consensus from the Board that it would be okay for them to go ahead and start the waiver process since we're not obligated to use it, since it's a time-consuming process? Is there any consensus on that?
Would that be taking action on something, or are you?
Before, I'll ask Mr. Saldani to weigh in on the, on the action process because he advises districts on this very frequently. I do want to add, too, if, the other opportunity that we have here is to understand the difference between why we are seeking the waiver and what the alternatives are that Mr. Saldani was talking about in terms of the auction process. That was part of the reason that we wanted the Board to have the opportunity to understand why would we be seeking that guidance of staff. So Mr. Saldani, if you can respond to the questions, then we can get additional direction from the Board.
Yeah, so we would just be asking to agendize it at a future date, perhaps as early as your next meeting, because it does go on the agenda as a public hearing, and there'll be a separate resolution. The, you know, public input is actually a required part of the waiver process. So not only do you hear from your community during that public hearing, but we're required to affirmatively go out and connect with our labor partners, our school site councils, and get their feedback on the waiver specifically. That's several of the boxes on the form itself. We have to check that we have made those connections. And so this, what we're asking is just to place that on the agenda at a future time, have the public hearing, adopt the resolution if you decide to approve the waiver. You may decide after the public hearing. Maybe now's not the right time, but it at least gives us the option to move forward if the majority of the Board thinks that it's wise to do so.
Yeah, I wouldn't have a problem with agendizing and having more tools in our tool belt. You know, that's, having the tool, you don't have to use it, but it's good to have it if you need it.
It's not mandatory. It just, if we decide to go a certain route, we'll have, we'll have that in our pocket, and we'll be able to use that to our benefit. If we don't, then we're stuck with just the statutory process, which is, you know, send me your highest offer in an envelope, and just, that doesn't work out well.
The second thing, just a request, as we move forward, we talk about different uses for any piece of property. You know, obviously, we talk about some workforce housing or some other types of things. I guess I would like to see in writing the dollars. How much money, if we, if we go highest best use versus cutting this out for this thing, I'd like to put dollars to that so we know how much we're giving up to have something versus just the talk of having it. I don't know if that makes any sense, what I'm trying to say, but I'd like to see the dollars and cents of it.
I, we, as our team is listening to the, we'll absolutely take that into consideration. I'm not a developer, very new in this process, but something that's also unique about that is depending upon the type of land use and the type of development, that, you know, the benefit that the district arrives may not ultimately be in the sale of the property. The ultimate benefit may be in the utilization of that property to achieve other district aims like workforce housing or, or other types of affordable housing. So there are different trade-offs. So I think what our team will do is create some different scenarios of what that could look like and what the, what different types of benefit the district can derive under different circumstances and different partnerships. I think that would be helpful. Okay.
Cost-benefit analysis.
Okay. Thank you for the direction.
Thank you so much.
Okay, this brings us to item 17A, human resources. The report regarding Williams Uniform complaint, Ms. Wolowitz.
You passed over 16.
Oh, whoops, never mind. 16A, travel and conferences. So you just get all discombobulated. Yeah, and I would have skipped completely over bond facilities. Hi!
I thought you were excusing me, Dawn. Good evening, everyone. I just have a present- You, go ahead. To, thank you. Refresh our discussion about travel and conference. I also provided as attachments, kind of long procedure, our Board policy and other documents for you. I just wanted to open up to the Board, after a little discussion, any comments, feedback, or other information that you wanted to provide so that we can complete that process for you. And we are currently seeking the other options. As we discussed last time, we were talking about our current travel process. We use the State of California Travel Store, and it can be a little cumbersome. And so the Board had asked us last time to look into new options. So we've been demoing some other kind of portals, things that are more friendly to travelers, they can operate on an app on their phone, things of that nature. So we're still doing that process. Thank you. So I just wanted to provide some kind of summary points about what's in this larger document. For air travel, we are looking for coach and economy class on commercial airlines. We're looking for US carriers if you're using a federal grant. So we enforce that kind of in my office. If you travel on a federal grant, you must fly American. For auto, if you're renting cars, or you're going to drive your personal car, and then if you travel by train or bus or something else of that nature, we are always looking for the most economical travel. That feedback. Trying to stay away from it. And then for our mileage rates, we will update this annually, or as the IRS changes their rate. They just changed the mileage rate on January 1st, they do every year, to 65.5 cents. And so we will make sure that as travel reimbursements come through to us, that we comply with the correct rate, no matter what the employee turns in. We do edit it and correct it for them so that they are paid the correct rate for their mileage. Try to move it away from me. Go ahead, Marianne. Thank you. Yes. Incendials? Yes. And so the district for meals is currently 65 a day per person, so you have up to $65 a day. We do ask you for original- We do ask you for original itemized receipts. The reason that we ask you for those receipts is because we're looking for alcohol and extravagant purchases, which are prohibited in public education and public funding. So we do have a compliance portion to these kind of requirements that we're, we are looking at what you had for dinner. We're not necessarily interested in it, we're just looking for the pieces that are not allowable. Some of the things look really nice, I wish I went, but that's why we're asking you for receipts and the same thing for lodging. So an example for the lodging, it should be 300 a night, it's reasonable, but that's not always going to be true for you. So there's instances where you're going to Washington DC where that's not going to be possible. And so we've created kind of a process for you to get through that because we understand that there are cities that are particularly expensive and love to have a lot of conferences. So we won't be able to meet that threshold, but we're looking for reasonableness in lodging. And if you leave the, you know, the lower states and you go to Alaska, that has its own rules. We don't frequently travel outside of our, you know, California, but if you did, there are its own rules. Thank you. I also wanted to highlight that we are subject to a travel ban and these states listed are prohibited and we cannot travel to them and we cannot fund them on state funding. The only exceptions are if you are on a federal grant and you are required to attend some sort of conference or certification for that grant. And you would still need an exception or a waiver from the superintendent in order to attend, but that's really our only exception that we find would happen in our kind of service. But otherwise, just wanting to go to something in one of these states, we will have to unfortunately say no.
Ms. Campbell, can I ask with that, because I know in the past there's been some confusion with staff members who weren't aware of those things and then booked like a ban trip or a competition for a sporting event. So how proactively are we getting this list to like our site leaders?
So we are trying to, through this method and through some kind of communication pieces with our updated website, which is helping us, as well as some kind of Google Drive documents for travelers to give them quick guides. The kind of hard part of this list is this list can change at any time without notice. And so I know that that happened to someone where the list kind of republished and somewhere they were going was on the list. So this restriction does have a little caveat that if you kind of did something before the list changed, that you can take an exception there, but then in the future therefore, you know, stop traveling to these states. So there is a process for that and it does change. I think Arizona caught me recently, so that's the newest one.
Can you explain why there's a travel ban, why there's this process?
The process or the list?
Well, I guess every list has a different ban, but I mean, I'm just curious why.
I can jump on that political potato before you, if you'd like. Thank you so much. So it's, has to do oftentimes with discrimination policies, so particularly for transgender or gay and lesbian students, many of these states don't provide the same protections that the State of California provides. It can be because of other, generally speaking, rights issues. And so the State of California tells us as a government agency where we can spend the taxpayer dollars and it has to be consistent with the values of the State of California.
Great, thank you.
I have a question as well. I don't want to hear any laughter in the gallery, but you know, I have a Southwest coach body, but I don't have an American coach body. So what's the process for that? If I'm flying somewhere and it's, physically my knee will not go in an American coach seat.
They're both American carriers. You have the kind of option to choose your flight and if it's the reasonableness, then that's your choice. We're not going to contest that. If you needed something further than that, there is a process for medical exemptions if you needed to fly, I don't know what they're called now, coat, economy plus plus or something.
Yeah, it's economy plus, just to get the extra, it's only like three inches, but it's a, yeah.
There is a process for that written out for people and previously we, it was kind of more verbal, so we've written all that out for people.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the non-laughter, thanks.
Anna, thank you for this, but I also wanted to ask, I know when we talked about this initially, one of the things that came up was about kind of having a general guideline for board members around expenditures and kind of our, not a budget necessarily, not a line item, but kind of some guidance so that if someone wanted to attend a conference, they had an idea of what their range was. And I didn't see that on this, so I didn't know, like, have you done some of that or is that something that you think we should do for ourselves, like kind of where, what's?
You can pass it off to him, too.
I'll zip in there. And I think we were having a quick sidebar conversation, reaching way back, going to last year, one of the questions that the board would like some guidance on and perhaps we can meet and get, we can reach out to other districts to see like what are some averages? We can look and see what are some averages that school board members spend as a body and then look to see what that, how we got to those averages. So I think that's probably what we're looking at. This is, this is still really important because all employees are subject to these conditions in travel. So this is information that we needed to update anyway, but I think that's another piece that we wanted to get some response to, correct?
Yeah, so specifically as we, I should turn them, specifically as we talk about board travel, right? There were two aspects. One was this, which I really appreciate your effort on, like kind of just bringing it all into one place and updating it and then of course updating the system so that we're not, because our travel is infrequent and so we're often difficult. I can say that, you don't have to, in terms of like travel plans and cancellations. But, so that's one aspect and I appreciate this work, but then I think the other part is having some goalposts so that we know as board members, if you have an area of interest that is something, you know, if you want to attend the African-American Board Member Association Conference, or if you want to attend something on technology, you do have some discretion for those things. But in the past, it's been very unevenly utilized and so want to make sure that if you wanted to go to CSBA's coast to coast or, you know, all those things, those are options, but we just need to have some protocols in place so it's fair.
And I'll just take the opportunity to add, since we are talking about really CSBA-led issues and then also probably alignment with our board priorities, it seems natural that we could probably tie some loose ends together when we have our next governance session. That would be the best time to bring these things together. So we could have that ready by then.
Great. As well as your kind of options for the board, I know that we're concerned the last time we spoke that it's very difficult to go through our process and we agree with you, because we are on hold with your hotel for three hours. So we will work through that as well and hopefully can then kind of come back through that.
And I didn't see, is there a timeline too? Because as Amy knows, I'm the slowest to return my expenses in. This is following me my whole career, but is there a timeline?
You mean a limit to return your kind of reimbursement claim?
Yes.
We are asking you do it within 30 days of travel. Most employees, it's really about their funding and we're closing out the year and we have to make sure they have what they need and they have a grant, things of that nature, so.
Thank you for that reminder. Calvin's going to get right on that. Any other questions?
Close for today.
Thank you, Anna. Okay, bond facility projects update, Ms. Allison. I was sorry, Dr. Castro, but I didn't mean to cut you out.
You are 100% correct. Terry Allison, if you can make your way to the microphone. We heard public comment earlier, I'll just provide a little bit of context. Ms. Allison is going to provide some guidance in terms of how we would like to approach our bond measures before she gets started, or excuse me, bond measure projects. I do want to draw some distinctions between things that the district needs dramatically that perhaps don't really require a lot of feedback. So for example, if you were to tour some of our facilities after these rains, there are roofing needs. And perhaps there are some things that really require some detailed input and maybe there are things that really don't require as much input. And so part of, again, us seeking guidance from you, and I know Terry will get into this in detail, is the degree to which there are things that we could do well and efficiently and effectively and really we have the guidance that we need and she'll be referencing a previous process that was put in place versus those that maybe need a little bit of additional, we could all benefit from additional input and stakeholder feedback. So with that, Ms. Allison, if you would.
Exactly. Good evening, good evening. Can you hear me okay? Yes, very good. All right, so tonight I want to give you a little bit of update on some of the things we'll be touching on. So I want to do a quick overview of the long-range facility master plan that we started in 2019, go over the general project phasing considerations, talk about 23, 24, what are the first projects out of the gate that we will, are recommending for implementation, and then finally finish up by talking about some considerations for stakeholder input. All right, so back in 20, late to 2018, early 2019, we started our long-range facility master plan project and we put a 10-year timeframe for that, although in the plan it actually goes out 15 years in the actual plan itself. The master plan goals are really to assess and prioritize current and future needs, identify the cost for modernizing and renovating and adding facilities and transforming current learning spaces to better meet the needs of our future learners. At the bottom here, we have a link for our master plan, our long-range facility master plan is actually on our district website and that is located under the Measure E heading there. It's in a PDF format and is easy to open up and see. That document really guides you through the entire process, which was, you know, it was lengthy and thorough and we had a lot of input during that time. So the master plan participants, PPK Architects was our lead consultant. We established a community leadership committee and we have quite the group that's listed there on the right. May not be able to see all of those names here, but rest assured, we had district facility staff and administration, board of education and principals, teachers and other support staff, along with some community members there as well. And the community leadership committee, I just want to note, it helped us identify community priorities, they represented the stakeholders, we got a lot of ideas and contributions from them, they provided feedback, feedback, and then they were also communicated back to their community that they represented and I think that's a very important piece of this process. The master plan process, this is, you know, a very quick summary here, but the process, the priorities were really to identify projects for health and safety, the critical building renovations Dr. Castro was referring to earlier, we wanted academic facility improvements, identify plumbing, HVAC, electrical, talked about playgrounds and fencing and security. And then also we wanted to develop the site priority projects. So knowing that we didn't have unlimited funding and we were working towards at the time, a little over 300,000 or 300 million in bond funding capability, we wanted to set a group of projects as priorities that would meet that, our ability to fund them. So during that, we, prior to the process, we actually engaged in a facility needs assessment where we actually went out to every facility with our district personnel, we met with the teachers and the principals, the site staff, custodians, grounds folks. We identified a list of all the needed projects on the campus. We had a lot of site feedback through meetings and then we also worked with our consultant, PPK, to go back and revisit all those needs and come up with a list of projects that we could implement. I did also want to just make a quick mention that in the long-range facility master plan document, there are a number of items that might be interesting such as the guiding principles for facility design, planning guidelines and considerations, relationship between learning and the environment, which is very, very, very important, as well as revisiting historical perspectives on our sites. Project phasing considerations, there are, as we get started on our priority projects, there are a number of considerations. One of them is the critical needs. We also have our permitting jurisdiction, which is the Division of the State Architect, timelines and considerations for those projects and grouping the projects together so that it makes sense to implement them all at the same time. The construction climate and labor availability, I know we had our union reps here today and we will be working with them to, you know, guiding our industry available labor on how many projects we can actually perform at one time. How many contractors do we have available out there? Lead times for materials and equipment, we are still seeing historically long lead times for materials and equipment. We're hoping that that somehow eases up for us as we begin our process. And we also take into consideration the school calendar. What can we do while kids are in class? Do we need to use temporary housing for classrooms? Or is it, are projects able to be complete during breaks or the summer time when kids are not in session? All right. Recommended projects moving forward for 23, 24. I know we've talked about this before, but their fencing at various sites project where we are, our goal is to increase the safety and security of some of our sites that currently don't have full perimeter fencing. Other priority projects that don't necessarily require the Division of the State Architect approval or permit, which would slow down the process, include some of our playgrounds. We have a number of playgrounds that are over 25 years old and are in desperate need of being updated and, well, I should say completely replaced and the fall surfacing that goes along with them. And then roofing is another priority type of a project and we got a little taste of what we need. Facilities, our staff, we have an idea of what we need, but it really shows when we have a rain event like we did this, these last few weeks. All right, so considerations for stakeholder input. We're going to talk a little bit about the projects that really lend themselves to the input of numerous stakeholders. And our goal is to balance the standards, the district standards. So we do have some standards for fire alarm and door hardware and we do also have academic and education standards as well, project designs, materials and finishes with the site-specific conditions and preferences. Every site is going to be unique and will be treated as such. Stakeholder input, playgrounds, athletic facilities, security, teaching and learning areas and program functions of the campus. So those types of projects lend themselves to stakeholder input versus a plumbing infrastructure project or a major IT upgrade where we're utilizing, you know, our specific experts from the school district as well as the experts and our engineers to put together a project that will work well for us. So as we, as we start our process again, I know we have a list of Priority One projects that were for you, to take place from years, you know, are starting here for that were for you to take place from years, you know, are starting here for nine years We will be putting together site-level construction committees to review those priorities, and those representatives could include school principal, staff, school site council, and of course, the parent-teacher organizations. We want to reconfirm the priorities. We know that economics have changed. We know that school staff has changed since we first went over all of these priorities. We know we have new board members and new admin, and so taking another look at those priorities and making sure that they're in line with our goals is very important. We want to receive feedback on our school designs, on, you know, on those projects that really lend themselves to that. And we want to be able to communicate that and be transparent with our community on the projects when we're implementing them. So not only on the, as we're initially assembling the projects, but also how they're being implemented, what the, how it's going to impact schedules, and pick-up and drop-off and other things. So we want to make sure that we're able to communicate very well with our school communities about the projects that will take place there. And with that, I'll leave it open to any questions.
Thank you for the presentation. I just, my only question is, since we're having some unique weather right now, as it pertains to water, and there's a big difference between, you know, like a building is leaking with regular rain, then running rushing water, is, do we have people at the school sites that are reporting those anomalies where we might not never see it again because we won't have this much rain coming through on like slopes of the school, where you have an inch of running water down the walls and maybe coming into the building?
Yeah.
Do we have someone like looking at that stuff?
We do. We, I mean, we are always looking at it. We do have a work order system. So our sites have the ability to put in a work order that flags to us that there is a problem. In addition, if there's an emergency, meaning we have water rushing in, the power went out, a pipe burst, you know, we have staff on call 24 hours a day to, to be able to address those and document them. So yes, we do keep track of all of the, the locations where we have drainage issues. We have our regular suspects that we typically prep for when we have storms and weather. Same with Santa Ana winds, we have usual suspects for that, that type of condition as well. And so all of that knowledge we will be taking, and we try to resolve all those problems. If we can't, you know, with our internal staff, then we seek outside contractors to make those repairs.
Thank you for this report. Again, just shout out to your facilities team. It's, they're amazing. We did a site tour at Sheridan Way, and there was a leaky roof. And Dr. Gero says, you know, it wasn't for them, this, this whole place would have been flooded and the whole roof would have caved in, but there was a smaller impact. So I just appreciate the responsiveness to those kind of emergencies. For the, the question on the priorities, how, I guess, the, the criteria was on page eight, really for those, to set those priorities? Or how were those, why would, I guess my question is like, why playgrounds versus HVAC or plumbing? I guess that's my question.
For the first projects?
Yeah, for the, for page seven, yeah.
Oh, yeah. So really what we're trying to do is begin to implement our projects as soon as we can. Some projects require engineering and the permit through the Division of the State Architect, and those projects take a longer time to plan and implement. So we're looking at the, the projects that not only are critical, but very, very beneficial, and can be done without consideration of some of the other things that might come down the line. One of the, you know, for example, when we talk about roofing, we also want to know, are we going to be putting new HVAC on that roof? If we do, then we want to do those projects together. So the, we're looking at those timeframes so that we can group those projects in a logical, logical manner. Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for the report. I would just encourage you that every time we do a roof, that we don't lay a new roof over an old roof. We take it down to the bare wood so we can see what damage is underneath and repair the damage before moving on.
That have not been replaced yet. They, they are all complete tear-offs at this point. Yeah.
First, thank you. I know this is a huge amount of work, and I particularly appreciate you updating the master plan. I was on that committee, and it was huge list, and to, I know many of those things we've already kind of begun to address, like I think about the plumbing issue at Pacific, which was on the facilities master plan as a priority, and then we've already taken care of that now. So being able to really go through and make sure that we're current on that, I think is really important work and getting the feedback of our current site leaders, because we have had a lot of shifts. So I really, really do appreciate that. And I really wanted to thank you for the model of using our site-based kind of construction model. I think hopefully by implementing that, we can really get all of the stakeholders informed about what we're doing on-site and get good feedback, and I think it's a really nice model. So thank you for working on that. I guess I had a couple of questions and some comments. One, how will our ELOP schedule impact our ability to do some summer work? Because traditionally, that was when all these big projects got done, right? We took advantage of the summer when kids aren't there. But now we will have expanded learning programs at many of our elementary school sites. So are we shuffling those to accommodate construction?
Imagine that there's going to be a great coordination process for those programs. And we will, we'll address them at the time and schedule them at, you know, as well as we can. We may have some interim housing that may be necessary. I'm hoping that we can limit that so that we can maximize our, our funds for, you know, the greater good. But we will, we'll be coordinating that very, very closely. We have many, many programs that are on our, our campuses, some of them that we never learned until we were actually working on, on a campus during the summer to find out, oh, we have this great opportunity, and we have this great program, and we did, you know, last minute didn't know about it, but we'll, we'll work around them.
Great. Thank you. And then?
If I could just jump in really quickly too. Terry was really instrumental in a recent conversation. Our cabinet meets, which is basically all of our directors and above, meet to talk about, this was an issue that we talked about. So we will continue to have regular intervals to talk about what are the impacts on campuses for projects going forward. So this is an ongoing conversation.
Planted about a year out before we actually select the sites. Yeah.
I had a chance to share this document yesterday when I was presenting to the CBO PTO about the bond and kind of next steps. And so got lots of great feedback from them, and they really appreciated as well, the inclusion of parents and the PTO and school site in kind of the conversation around these things. One thing, I would love to see us get to a place where we're sharing that information really actively with the community, both before and after we do some, even those things that they won't see, the plumbing, the roofs, you know, that stuff, because we want the community to know how we're spending their dollars. And so you see those big signs up right on the fences saying like, hey, your tax dollars at work. Another thing that I know, actually, Dr. Barstow had mentioned, is that in Keneho, they used postcards to communicate with neighbors within a certain catchment of the schools to talk about changes that were being made, which I think is a brilliant idea, because we have neighbors who don't have kids in our schools, and they're not necessarily going to see the benefits of some of those things, but it's a way to communicate. I know I'm telling you this, and it's really a Marianne thing, but I'm just.
It all goes hand in hand. It all goes together.
And we've already had those conversations too. We have a multi-tiered plan for the new project manager that eventually will come onboard, have full access to Parent Square and the websites, all the postcards, all of those signs. I keep asking, when can I put up my first sign? So we definitely have a multi-tiered plan ready to go.
Great. And then as we look at some of those playgrounds, I would be remiss if I didn't share that, like, as a, as a CDAC member, one of the things we hear often from our families with students with disabilities is that it's difficult for their kids to access those playgrounds. So I, I know it is an additional expense often to do those inclusive playgrounds, but I really think it's a great opportunity for us to model our values, right? And to make sure that as we're investing, we're investing so that all students can benefit from those facilities. And, but thank you. Really appreciate the work. I know it's been a stressful, big, extra thing on top of an already big job, especially with the public comment aspects. But I appreciate your willingness to engage in that and to, you know, move forward with that feedback, because I think in the end, it's going to get us where we really want to be. So.
I think so too. Thank you very much.
Sabrina reminded me of something. I was at the Ventura County office this Saturday, and one of the school districts was sharing how they communicated with the community, with their bond measure, was they took certain projects and they did time lapse. So it showed what it looked like before, and then it says, and there was a big thing that says, this is what your money has done, or this is what your money created. And it was a time-lapse photo of how dramatic the difference was, and it was pretty impressive. So.
It's a good idea.
No, that's a great idea. I think we did that with the farm.
With the farm and the Lemon Grove Playground as well. So absolutely, those types of things may be put in place with the right equipment.
I just want to echo what Sabrina said about inclusive playgrounds. The city's doing that. You know, we want to echo, we want to support that as well.
And that's our new model, as you hear.
Fantastic.
That was a very collaborative project, and our, you know, that, for us, we knew that that would kind of serve as a model and a template as we move forward. And so I know, I think Gina, you were involved in that too, but, you know, we have a lot of items that we require to be included for all types of play and for all, you know, for, for everybody, really. So I'm excited to see that happen. I'm excited to see them truly accessible to all of our students now. So looking forward to that.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thanks.
It sounds like we have the guidance that we're seeking. I'm just going to bring our attention real quickly to slide eight, which is the types of projects for stakeholder input, which are playgrounds, athletic facilities, things related to security, teaching, learning activities, program functions of campus. And so it feels like there's consensus that those are the kinds of things where we would move to a more formal site-level construction committee. But other things that are more structural and infrastructure, seems like we have consensus that we can proceed effectively and efficiently. Okay? Not to say that those other processes aren't effective and efficient, they are, but they also require a lot more time and dedication and planning. Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, now, 17A Williams Uniform Complaints Procedures, Ms. Wallits.
This is an item that I bring forth to the board each quarter, and I am pleased to report that we have for this quarter, no complaints received for any sites.
Great. Thank you. And I real, I'm so sorry. I see Anne back there. I'm so sorry, Anne. We should have pulled this up to the front. I'm so sorry. Next time, flag me and say, I want to go home. I know, Personnel Commission report.
I'm going to join Ms. Campbell. Okay, good evening again, President Rodriguez, members of the board, and Dr. Castro. Before I get started, I just want to officially introduce Ms. Anne Campbell. We do have some new board members, and so they may not be aware of who you are. And so this is the board's appointee to the Personnel Commission, and she'll be partnering with me this after, or this evening. The complete Personnel Annual Report was provided as an attachment in your board agenda this evening, and it is also posted on the classified website. And so, Marianne, we're just going to highlight different points throughout the report, so we'll do our best to guide you to the right slide. So if you could jump forward to slide five, we'll start there. And so just real quickly, you know, there may be a basic question, what is a merit system? And so the merit system, simply stated, is an equitable personnel management system that governs our classified employees, similar to the civil service. And the fundamental purpose of the merit system and the Personnel Commission is to just ensure that employees are promoted, retained, selected, based on merit and fitness, with no prejudice or favoritism. The Personnel Commission also has the responsibility of serving as the Appeal Board for when the Board of Education takes disciplinary action against a permanent classified employee. So next slide, please. Who are our commissioners? We have Kathy Stallings, who is Vespa's appointee to the commission, and she was appointed originally in December of 2019, and most recently reappointed this past December. And although she's only been serving on the commission for three years, she is a VUSD retiree who served the district and our students for 33 years. And so Ms. Stallings brings, gosh, just years of experience as a school office manager, as an administrative support staff for Ed Services, and then also as a very active Vespa leader, including the Chair for the Negotiations Team. Next, we've got Ms. Campbell, who is the board's appointee. And again, she's only served on the commission for two years, but again, a VUSD retiree who served our students and our staff for 24 years. And so she started out as a classified employee and then became a teacher for us. And then the third person that makes up our commission is referred to as the joint appointee. And so the Vespa's appointee, along with the board's appointee, appoints that joint appointee. And so serving in that spot, we have John Walker, who became the joint appointee in June 2020. And again, only a couple of years on the commission, but as we know, a longtime board member, 29 years, serving as a board member for VUSD. And so we are just so grateful for not only the experience that our commissioners bring to the classified service and to their roles on the commission, but also for their history and knowledge of the district. Slide eight, please. Feel free to jump in whenever.
You're doing fine.
Part of what the commission is responsible for is classification and compensation. And so in simple terms, they have the responsibility to classify our positions, assign them to appropriate classifications, establish the career ladders, and to write the, the job description. So it's the board, you have the authority to create positions and define the duties, but after that happens, it's up to the commission, or it's the commission's responsibility to come up with the knowledge and the skills, the abilities, the minimum qualifications to carry out the duties that the board has established. And so we just are highlighting here, we created nine new classifications or, or job descriptions. We've revised 18 this past year, and it is routine for us. Anytime we have a vacancy, we want to revise, I'm sorry, review our job descriptions to make sure that they're accurate and reflective of the current work that's being done.
And this is really important too, because of the limited, you know, job mark, people coming into the jobs. We want to be competitive with other industries even, you know. So it's been, been really hard for them to fill a lot of positions. So this has been really important to reclassify and, you know, change all of this up. So they're doing it, they're, they're on it.
Let's see, next slide. And so recruitment and selection obviously is a large part of what the commission is responsible for. We just highlighted, we received a little over 3,600 applications. Although we received that many applications, we continue to be in a really tough job market, struggling to actually get people who will accept the position. struggling to actually get people who will accept the position. So when we see 3,600 applications, sometimes it's like this is really all we have to consider. So exciting to see that, but the reality is sometimes not that exciting. So in the 2122 school year, we opened 65 recruitments that consisted of these other components, written exams, performance exams, and technical interviews. Next slide.
So of those 3,600 applications, they were only able to hire 111, right? Yeah. And every time she tells us that they offered somebody a job and then they turn it down or they get to the final stage and then they don't show up. So it's a constant, constant thing for them.
Yes.
More than what it used to be. I mean, it used to be, you had to fight to get in these jobs, so.
Well, and we even have that difficulty with substitutes. So I had a staff member who was so excited, she processed three new classified subs, pairs, ready to give the first assignment and the person couldn't work because they were going to the snow. So it's like, you know, we get so excited about having these people and then when we're ready to give them assignments, they're not so ready. So our transaction summary, the board is used to seeing our transactions report on a monthly basis on the consent agenda. So this just kind of highlights the new hires and the statistics there.
And on the limited term and exempt appointments, the reason the number jumped from 287 to 705, they included subs in that this time and they hadn't before.
Right.
So that's why it looks like a lot.
Let's see, slide four, I'm sorry, next slide, this one. We just wanted to point out here that our classified employees earn longevity increments after accomplishing different milestones within their career. And so we're excited to report that 34 new employees accomplished earning additional 1.2%. We had 17 employees newly earning the 4.10, 25 employees at the 7.08, eight employees earning an additional 10.15%, 14 employees earning 13.31% in addition to their salaries. And lastly, eight new employees that are now earning 16.46%. So a nice way to honor not only the longevity, but for our classified employees to earn a little bit more pay. Let's see, slide 14. And just the commission and myself could not do any of what we do without the classified HR team and just want to give them kudos. We have Belin Gonzalez as our HR supervisor, Reyna Mario is our HR analyst, Jackie Lopez is our talent acquisition specialist, next slide, Katie Cogburn is our HR specialist, Alexandria Wallerby is our HR specialist, Rita Montahano is our HR technician, and Maria Lopez is our district receptionist. And I cannot miss our HR, our certificated HR team members as well. I know they're not on the classified side, but they are our partners. We lean on them every day. And so I just wanted to say an extra special thank you to Carmen and to Sherry, Anna, Angel, who is new, Trish. Hopefully I got everybody. Did I miss someone?
We have a song.
Okay. Oh, yes.
It amazes me, the, just the variety of all the jobs and part-time, full-time, this, that, bus drivers, cafeteria, office, here, there, everywhere. And it's just, they do a fabulous job of keeping track of all of them. Good job.
Thank you, Anne. And Andrea, I was wondering, are you seeing any particular trends in separation of service? Like anything that's different from previous years?
We've experienced quite a few people leaving the state for a variety of reasons. We did have a lot of people moving to take care of family members. We saw that trend for a little bit and I'm sure that has to do with COVID. And then we did have quite a few people leave for other positions that paid more, but now that we have settled and we got that great 10% increase, I'm fingers crossed that that is going to help retain our employees. So we are tracking that information as employees submit their resignations so we can kind of track the trends.
Not a question, but I would like to thank Anne for her report she sends to us about the Personnel Commission meetings. That's something we weren't getting with our past commissioners, so I do appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Good job. Okay, thank you so much.
Agreed. Thank you, Anne. We all appreciate the information you share and Andrea, thank you for the work with the commission, it's really appreciated. Okay, that brings us to our consent calendar. Items 19 through 22 are generally routine in nature. Is there any item that any board member wishes to pull for a separate conversation? No? I do have an item, and now I can't remember where it is.
22A.
Yes, thank you. 22A. It's good that someone's on this. 22A, which is a legal contract with our, with Jones Hall, who are providing bond counsel for us. So do we want to do that one first or do you want to do all the others? We'll do 22A first. So I guess I just, this is just, this is a contract that's a $60,000 contract, so per our protocols, should have been separate on an action item. But also I just had questions about the term of this.
Yes. Well, it comes from the term?
Yeah, so because the bond is a, you know, it's a 30-year plan, but we're hiring these folks.
This would be through the first, the first series. In other words, the first issue of bonds. This isn't, this is, this contract won't extend for the next 14 years through five or six issues of the bond.
Okay, so because this is our first bond, how long is the first issue of a bond?
Well, you issue bonds in series, you have an authorization of 435 million. You issue them in series. Basically, we try to project how much money we're going to need to do projects for the next three to four years. There are, as Dr. Danenberg pointed out, I guess at a PAC meeting, we have to spend the money within a certain number of years after we issue the bonds in order to stay on the right side of some IRS tax issues. So we try to estimate what we need and then we issue a bond for that amount of money. And when that money's gone, we would issue Series B, Series C, DE. And this, this could take place over 15 years. This contract would be for them, they've actually already done work for you. They were, they, I guess, you know, they, with the expectation that they were going to get a contract, they actually did the resolution work to put the actual Measure E on the ballot, all of that stuff. So it's from that point through the first sale of the first series, Series A.
Okay, and we're expecting that to be how long?
You would probably, and I need to know, I don't know, I can't tell you if the prices are the same for the, for the next series, that kind of thing. I just don't know how they, how they structure it. This would cover us probably for the next four years.
Okay, I'm just trying to gauge like, so it's a $60,000 contract, is it $60,000 a year? Is it? Because when we did the parcel tax.
Oh, no, no, no. It's a, it's a single, it's a single cost to do all of the legal work associated with the first series.
Okay, because when we did the parcel tax, it was an annual fee that we paid to the person who did the writing of the parcel tax. It was, I want to say it was like $75,000 annually that was paid to the lawyer who, who did that for us. So that's what I was trying to understand.
I think Jones Hall, I think Jones Hall did the work for you guys to put it on the ballot. I'm not sure about that second service you're talking about.
The payment for this legal service, does that come out of the bond or is that a general fund expenditure?
It comes out of bond proceeds. It's part of what they call the costs of issuance.
Great, thank you. So with that, I'll entertain a motion. This is just for 22A.
Move to approve.
Thank you, vote as follows. Trustee Forsythe?
Yes.
Trustee Peterson?
Yes.
Trustee Danenberg?
Yes.
And Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries 4-0.
Great, and then for the balance of the items 19 through 22.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, vote as follows. Trustee Forsythe?
Yes.
Trustee Peterson?
Yes.
Trustee Danenberg?
Yes.
And Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries 4-0.
Great, thank you, nearing the end. Board reports, does anyone have anything to share?
Not at this late hour.
I mean, I, all right, I do. Thanks, well, that answers that.
James, not at this late hour.
Kicked a hint.
Yeah, right. I just want to thank Dr. Castro for taking me on a site visit. We went to Anacapa, Sheridan Way, and EP Foster. And I also want to thank the principals, Mr. Ruiz, Dr. Guero, and Mr. Garcia, and all the staff that take their time for us to come there and to educate me and, you know, educate the public essentially on what's going on at that school. I saw some amazing programs. I saw some really amazing stuff that's happening in the DLI program and those DLI classrooms. I saw teachers and students who are being very innovative, forward-thinking. STEM was, was a highlight of mine at EP Foster. I'm just, I'm just really impressed by our staff and by our teachers and by our students especially because they, we got some smart kids and we got some wonderful, sweet kids. They would come up and say, hey, do you want to come play? Yeah, sure. But, you know, I hope to continue that. I would love to see more school sites in the future. I think it's just wonderful that as a board member, as a new board member, is to see our schools, see our sites and how are they run, what are the kids like, what are the teachers like, and just get a better idea. So I just want to thank you again, Dr. Castro, for taking me on that trip.
Do you also want to share about the Chamber of Commerce that you filled in for me?
Okay, I also went to the Chamber of Commerce. I went to the breakfast and that was great too. We kind of pitched our, we thanked the Chamber of Commerce for the Teacher of the Month and we also thanked them and taxpayers for Measure E. Yeah, it was, it was a very fun, thank you for letting me fill in.
Thanks, Mr. Castro. I just wanted to share that this morning, Dr. Castro, Mr. Peterson, and I had a education workforce housing kind of conversation with the folks from CSBA about sort of next steps and looking at some specific kind of property guidelines. And so it was very helpful and I felt like it added to the conversation. Other than that, nothing to report, coming events.
I don't know why that caught me off guard after three hours, but nevertheless it did. So if you can take a look at your screen, these are the coming events. We have a lot of the usual stuff coming up. I do, because Dr. Bayless is often doing this, he wants a plug for the ALCAP Advisory Committee. I'm doing this kind of tongue-in-cheek, but many, many of the items that we discussed tonight relate to priorities that are aligned with our supplemental and concentration funds as well as the strategic planning that comes along with the ALCAP Advisory, which you see as February 2nd. All other meetings are equally as important, but we're just highlighting that one.
Thank you. So for future board items, we have emergency preparedness and then we'll add back the waiver discussion.
Yes, surplus property, yes.
And then I wanted to ask about getting, you know, we had some members here from the Pacific High School staff talking about the credit recovery plan for their site. And more globally, I would like to really understand kind of all of the efforts that we're doing around, to address that kind of learning loss and credit deficiency. But again, I'm one of five, so I don't know if that's something that the board shares interest in a conversation around.
Yeah, I definitely think we need to look into it more because I received the email as well. So it seemed very passionate about it, so I want to see what, from their point of view.
The question I would have related to it is, you're talking about credit recovery. I hear Calvin saying, you know, some discussion, I guess, of what's going to happen at Pacific. And I think that's, we need to have some discussion on that. I don't know how or where, what's the appropriate.
If I can make a couple of suggestions, between now and the next regularly scheduled meeting, our staff, including Mrs. Menares, will be meeting with the staff at Pacific High School to sit and have a really collegial relationship, or excuse me, yes, a collegial relationship, but a collegial conversation. I think you heard the spirit that they came in today, which is wanting to understand an issue and they have some great ideas. So that is going to happen and we could report out on that when we come back. But I think there's a broader issue that is symptomatic at, that is, we heard symptomatic at Pacific High School, which is what are the conditions that we are addressing as it relates to, in particular, graduation rates and the graduation impact. We have a lot to share in that, so we would be very excited to share what we're doing and the scope and scale of some of the challenges that we're facing. So if, if we want to talk about graduation rates and interventions, many of the things that they talked about are things that we are addressing directly. So if that's something that the board has consensus on or you can shape my comments or feedback.
Yeah, so from my perspective, I definitely, I think the issues raised by the Pacific staff are important as it relates to their program. One of the things that we've talked about is that it's not really the board's domain to discuss whether or not we add two classes to a school site. That's not something that we would typically weigh in on. However, the bigger issue of how are we systematically impacting credit recovery and what are the options that the district is considering and how do those kind of play out? That's something that I think is appropriate for us to have a conversation around. And Mr. Palo mentioned, you know, a program that used to exist at Ventura High School that doesn't exist anymore. So getting some updates like that because that was something that I thought was still in place. So having that broader picture and certainly with, you know, an update on where we are with Pacific.
And I think one of the concerns that I would have with what's happening at Pacific, are we talking about a possible short-term problem because of what happened with COVID or is it a long-term need that we're trying to house? It would seem that to spend money to build two classrooms at the school on a short-term need, then we've got some classrooms we may not need at the school.
Understood. And I, so that way we don't start speaking about something that's not agendized. We, you know the action steps that we're going to take directly for that, but going back to the future board item, something broad like credit recovery and graduation rates, something like that, we can, it sounds like, if I could see head nodding, we could have consensus, great, okay. Good, because exactly, Dr. Danenberg, what you shared, the, it's a, it's a much more complex issue. And part of these things are long-term and everyone saw coming. And part of it is very acute and we need to be able to address the needs of the students that are in front of us and also the ones that follow.
Great, thank you. Any other future board items? And then I know we still need to schedule our special board meeting on budget, so. Okay, board or superintendent comments?
I'm sorry, before we move on, I was, we staff would like to suggest, recommend that we have a dashboard data update on a, on a future item as well. And then we'll have some other bond-related items as a follow-up. And if I also understood correctly, we will be bringing back CTE, that item. And did the board have any interest in having a broader discussion about CTE programs at that time? We'll be bringing back the action item that came as a first read specifically for that, but did the board have any desire to have a conversation about CTE programs more broadly?
I think the only issue was about the, creating another TA position without calling it TA position was the only thing that we, right?
Well, I have another question slash concern and I ensured this via email with Dr. Bayless and Dr. Castro, but getting a kind of an update on Foothill and what we're looking at moving forward for the programs that were impacted at the, at the end of the summer and then kind of not specific to Foothill, but more globally, some questions and concerns that have come up like around stipends. So, you know, Ms. Lomax is subbing at one of our schools now and she's seen some things and shared some things. So I have a lot of questions. I'm going to address them with you tomorrow, but then if we want to have a broader group conversation, I would welcome that, but I think maybe we'll get some feedback after Any comments before we close out? Any comments before we close out?
I have one comment. January is School Board Recognition Month, and in order to recognize you, I will stop talking. But, but I did want to really respect and honor you, because the work that we have ahead of us is tremendous, there are incredible opportunities. And thank you, Calvin, for showing the certificate that was really just supposed to bring a smile to a face, not supposed to be made public, but thank you for doing that. But yeah, on a serious note, thank you for the work that you do. We have wonderful work ahead of us, and thank you for leading it.
Thank you. And I actually just wanted to say thank you to Dr. Barsted, who has been very graciously filling in for us in a very hard seat, as he well knows, and at a pretty crazy time. So thank you for coming out of retirement yet again to serve this community. We really appreciate it, and appreciate your wisdom and your willingness to put us back in our places when we're not supposed to be out of them. Like, only a retired Superintendent can do, right? Thank you. And since I know you won't still be here, I think, at our next regularly scheduled Board meeting. So there you go, thank you. And with that, unless somebody else has anything, we will accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
A second.
Thank you, Trustee Forsythe?
Yes.
Trustee Peterson?
Yes.
Trustee Callahan? Oh, sorry, Trustee Danenberg?
Yes.
Tired. Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes, thank you. And thank you so much to Base for being here and covering our meeting and streaming it live. Really appreciate you guys, and hope you all have a safe night.